Close enough to six thirty. Called this meeting in the bench. The order on November fourth, two thousand twenty four. Jeff.
Yeah.
Brian.
Here as well.
Kathy.
Here.
Anne is here.
John is here.
Is here. Okay, the first item on the agenda is public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone online?
Not with a hand up yet.
Okay. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Yes. I think everybody knows me. I'm Jim Starkey, thirteen, Tuxpoint Road. I've been deeply involved in the harbor since about nineteen eighty, maybe seventy nine. And former chairman and harbor advisory committee and a former chairman of the dredging committee. There's some things I would like to remind you.
Wait, this is non-agenda items, right?
Who?
Sit down. Mr. Starkey.
I shall shut up.
Okay. There is no chairman's report. And now we review the action items.
So I had, um. We had an action item ways back that kind of fell off. I think because we thought it was nearing completion. And it has to do with the wayfinding signs. We approved signs back in June. I don't see any new signs. And it's November, so. I don't know what the status is, but I'd like it to be on this action item list until there are actual signs in the downtown.
They've gotten bogged down with, so, uh, time couldn't speak to this.
I can, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I know what's going on.
I. Please continue.
Okay. So it came up with the historic district commission, and that's not all of the signs, just, uh, I know you know that there were several signs, but it's only the signs in the commission, which is one at the end of School Street, at the end of Pine Street, and the two signs that come in Church Street and by Seaside One to say parking is back here. And there was some concern about the size of the signs. And I think more critically, a concern about, well, how can you consolidate the sign information that is already at these points? At the end of Pine Street, at the end of School Street, there's a lot of information that's get disseminated. And the historic commission did not want to add more signposts necessarily. Would some of this information be consolidated into the signs that were proposed? And I think what we had looked at, we didn't look at this from an informational perspective. We looked at it in terms of design, how does it look? But I'm not sure that the information on the signs that we approved, when was it, three months ago, necessarily was final. But there are some other, there are some other pieces of information that are on other signs at those locations that could be consolidated onto these signs. The other comment that was made is that artistically, it looks great. But from a practical perspective, when you devote so much space to graphics, your sign of necessity must become larger so that the copy that you're going to put on the sign can be read. So the signs of necessity are larger, and they probably should have done something to make the graphic a little smaller, but we can live with that. So we have asked the wayfinding committee to come back and say, how can you consolidate some of the information on signs that are already there so that we're not putting another post in the ground? And some of these signs are like.
The wayfinding committee is being re-instituted?
Just say, yes, and they are going to, well, I'm assuming that at the next historic commission, they will come by and say, okay, this is what we think. So it's really just kind of integrating some of the information that might be there.
I'd still like to see it on the action item list so that it doesn't fall through the cracks.
When is the next historic?
Uh, pretty soon. November fourth, I think it's a week from Thursday.
Okay. Will we hear from you back on Wednesday or second?
Yes.
Also, in speaking with Ruth, President was coming way over budget. Job. Uh, Ruth said that, Ruth had put out to bid, as far as pricing, it was coming way over budget.
Oh, the signs?
Yeah.
Oh.
I think she was looking at ten thousand, I think we allowed, we offered six thousand dollars, and she was coming in around ten thousand dollars.
I have family in that industry. If the prices are coming too high, I'll gladly see if I can find additional suppliers for you to add to your list. You know, bids.
These signs at the end of Pine and School are like four feet by four feet, which are pretty, pretty good size, although if you walk up to some of these signs and say one twenty seven, bigger than you think it is. It really is when you walk up and take a tape measure.
I think there was some talk about getting rid of some signs and didn't.
Yeah, so the Downtown Improvement Committee was interested, because this was a subcommittee of Downtown Improvement. I asked them to come to us with their recommendations, and they have not come forth with it.
What do they need?
I'm not sure, but I will make sure to bring that up again.
Okay.
Yep.
Wait. I think we understand why there are accidents.
Yes.
Um, is there anything else that you should have on that? Okay. The, um, next item on the agenda which is listed is mooring marinas regulations. I think in fact will be better labeled of Manchester Harbor mooring and waterway regulations. I think that's what we're going to be talking about. And, um, we have a packet of the waterway regulations. And bear with me. The change is in the, um, of specifics of temporary mooring, which allows, um, temporary moorings to be taken off the mooring list. For me, and, and those temporary moorings can include moorings that are rented by the boatyard. For me, the, the most serious consideration is that, is that bottom moorings, this does not apply to slips. Slips are under a whole different set of regulations. Bottom moorings are supposed to be distributed fairly and equitably. And in some places in the past, moorings were given over to marine enterprises to be rented, and the renters were chosen based on their use of that facility. So the first thing that concerns me is the possibility of, um, the moorings being used to reward people who have large bills with them. This regulation says that, um, the proposed regulation says that moorings will be assigned from the mooring list. It doesn't say that they'll be assigned from the mooring list in order of the mooring list. So if, when we consider these after the HAC has, has looked at it, I would like to see that very specifically, um, moorings are assigned in order of the mooring list. And, and that may be some language that suggests that the, whoever is renting them can't say, well, this is a twenty eight foot boat, and this is a forty foot slip, so I'm not going to take a twenty eight foot boat.
But they're not, they're not charging per foot, right?
I have no idea.
The, there isn't, the regulations include the, that, that the, um, boatyard, um, be able to charge for ancillary, um, but it doesn't address. And, and I think there's a suggestion that the use of the float and the tackle that holds the boat in place should be reasonably charged to the, to the rental. But I think we need to have a reasonable charge for that and not just whatever. Because once you get into whatever the marina wants to charge, you're saying rich people get to jump the line.
Are you suggesting, just for clarification, are you suggesting that the reasonable charge would cover maintenance costs, but not necessarily generate a profit? Or are you suggesting that the boatyard could generate a small profit from that?
I'm really not suggesting anything except that I don't want to see the profit to be so significant that it changes the dynamics of the business. And, and I, I have a concern. Well, um, that this is being proposed as a way of strengthening the boatyards and, and reducing the chances that they will be converted to condos with captive slips. And what the, among the things that this would do, if they were allowed to make a profit on it, is make the summer storage of boats a bigger part of their economics, which I think would make them more attractive as a takeover rather than less. Um, and I will continue to blither for another few minutes. Um, so the HAC is meeting on Wednesday to discuss this again. And I suggest that, um, we put together our recommendations for what we would like to see different in.
Um, the comments that I had, I like the idea of making sure we take care of the people on the waitlist first. So I'm very much in favor of that. I agree with Anne. It should be based on the order of those on the waitlist. And I had a question as, as to how would the people on the waitlist find out about these? So if we're saying that these moorings are under the purview of the marinas, excuse me, the boatyards, then I would expect them to fairly communicate to all those on the waitlist that these are. How would that work?
The harbor, the harbor master, I think is the person who gives them out. But, um, I want to see some cracking of that. And I think just saying that it has to, so the harbor master would be.
Okay, so, so in order for these, um, moorings to be rented, so to speak, a sublet, if it was an apartment, I'd be talking about a sublet here, right? Okay, so a sublet, all of that would go through the harbor master, right? Okay, so I would also agree, I'd want to see it based on the order of those on the waitlist, but I'm wondering how we would communicate to those people to assess their interest. You can answer that in a minute. The other thing I noticed was, um, there was some, uh, line three seventy two talks about allowing people to maintain the moorings themselves if they are, what is the language used here? Have the expertise, I forget what the language is.
If qualified.
If qualified. I felt that language was much too subjective. So, you know, it begs the question, from a policy standpoint, writing a policy, if there's some sort of expertise, or if you are the arbiter of that, you know, the harbor master, I'd expect it to be a little bit clearer, maybe, um, approved by the harbor master, or just something, it's just a little too vague for me. And then I was curious as to whether or not there was a, a conflict between that item, allowing individuals, qualified individuals to maintain the moorings with line nine thirty five, I'm sorry, not line thirty five, um, three sixty three, which says only companies can maintain moorings. So there seemed to be a little bit of conflicting language around, um, the maintenance of the moorings.
What line numbers, please?
Um, line three seventy two on page ten, too subjective, and may conflict with line three sixty three on the same page. That was my comment. Three seventy two and three sixty three here.
All right.
Well, it says town approved mooring service providers.
And then below it says.
Then below it says mooring.
Right, but further up there was the mention of companies. And I just, I feel like if we're talking about individuals, we need to clarify what that means. It's a little bit, um, it's just too vague from a policy standpoint.
Only authorized mooring companies may service. That's, it's three sixty three and three sixty, three sixty four.
Says only authorized mooring companies. I would just suggest rephrasing that.
Maybe change companies to providers.
Providers.
Providers are listed.
That's right. And then, um, whatever qualifications, you know, how are you going to judge if someone's qualified? That, that's.
Well, maybe I should just say something that, um, it should be the gear placement to be inspected by the harbor master or something. Like, there's plenty of people that can put moorings in themselves.
Understand.
It's not.
Uh, it's not rockets, I get it. But I'm just saying, there's, there must have been something in your mind around how you would assess if someone's qualified or whatever. I, I think, just from a policy, how you write a policy standpoint, I just feel that language is.
Is, is, does town approved mean you approved it, Mayan?
Yeah.
I guess, okay. And why don't you just put a line, others, as, other, other service providers as approved by? Because somebody could come up with somebody in PBD, or I don't know, Danvers, who, who may be quite qualified. It's just that they're a person's brother in law or something. And that, you know, based on your.
That happens.
Uh, that happens. And that's not an unreasonable situation.
What they need to do is see the tackle, inspect the chain, inspect shackles, inspect wire used.
Not much to it, yeah.
Find the thimbles.
Okay. So I had, I had a couple of questions. So essentially, we're talking, I mean, before all of this happened, I guess there were ten moorings that were used by Manchester Marine and five by Crockers that were essentially service moorings and also doubled as transient moorings in the summer. And now the number of moorings is doubled, and they've gone and said, okay, we're just renting these moorings out. I like the idea of going down the, down the list. In terms of what the charge is for that, of course, all, both firms have invested money in floats. So that's not covered by, I mean, how are they going to get a return on this if we say, look, this is the way you've got to go? It seems that floats have to be built in there as a cost somehow. I don't know what that number is. We don't have to worry about that, I think, right now, but it seems to me that that's part of the mix. And was there any concern that those ten original moorings, which are now, you know, half of a, half of a float mooring? Do those get rented out for, say, I don't know, July and August? Assuming that June, June and before, and September and after are service, service times, so they can't do that. But are they going to rent them out if it's just a short summer? I mean, a short two months? We don't know, correct?
Correct.
You know, and I don't know how much transient business they get that they say, no, we got to hold on to them because we got a lot of calls, people that want to pull in for two or three days. The other, the other question that says fourteen days for those moorings with regard to transients. Is fourteen days total? Fourteen days any single stretch? What is fourteen days?
Fourteen days of the course of the season. Uh, it's no different than the rule where you can let someone use your mooring up to fourteen days, and then they have to leave the harbor.
Can I charge for them? Can I charge them for it?
That's against the law.
Uh huh.
I won't say anything.
It's against state law for private mooring to be rented. It's not against state law for commercial moorings to be rented. It's in, it's in the paperwork.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So they, I mean, they, they charge transient some number, I guess.
Transient's right. Transient, there's a charge for that, absolutely.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, Manchester Marine uses Dockwell just to do.
Okay. Okay, but you're saying they can only do that fourteen total days?
For a specific vessel.
Oh, for a vessel. So somebody wants to visit Manchester for two weeks, fine. Want to do it three weeks, that's a problem. But you go to two weeks, then somebody two days, it could go, okay. All right. That's kind of a clarification for me. And for all of the, what did they pay Manchester this year in terms of waterway fees?
So Manchester Marine paid, um, what did they pay the town?
Ten or twenty slips?
They paid for ten.
Okay.
Because there was no clarification by the board for the summer. My intention was that once the select board decided what the rule was going to be, what, uh, how this was, uh, going to change and be approved, then I would go ahead and charge the boaters in the spots that were assigned seasonally a waterway fee for their vessel. I have to capture their registration, their documentation. All that has to go into the database so that it's recorded and saved annually. None of that got done, none of that got done for those ten moorings because there was no ruling.
Okay, understood.
I can't, I can't enforce a rule that's not.
In fact, the rule was that they could not rent them seasonally.
That's right. In April, when this, when the harbor advisory committee first brought this up and came up with, let me finish. When I first came up with, uh, the, uh, change to the rule for the language, the HAC brought it up and then failed to put it in the minutes, which I didn't know about until we came here, and Jim pointed it out. Then it was.
It also wasn't on the agenda.
Excuse me.
Yes. Sorry.
It was on the agenda. As a matter of fact, because I have the agenda right here. I have it right here. I'll email it to you.
Okay. We're not discussing.
No, I'm just clarifying, I'm clarifying a point.
Right now, we're talking about how we are going to go forward.
Right. Well, it was, it was put to me that I'd taken a misstep, which I did. I did. I admitted that, I admitted it in my office in front of the two of you.
I really want to get recommendations to the harbor committee, harbor advisory committee, which is meeting in two days. So, um, we can hash out whose fault it was.
I don't.
We, we're not here to.
No, I have, we want to lay out a plan.
Exactly. Not gonna, not go backwards here.
No, 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 we just want to, let's, let's determine what's the best course of action going forward. We've learned by whatever, if they want to call mistakes, or whatever happened, happened, and this is, it's a part of the learning curve, and let's go forward.
Okay, another question.
I should finish.
Go.
So under HAC, and I, understanding that it never made it into the minutes, the rule change vote, it was put on the agenda for two nights from now, there'll be a recommendation.
Okay.
I actually thought this should have waited until after that vote.
But the proposal, as you see it being discussed on Wednesday, will be for the town to collect the waterway fee for any boat that's in the harbor.
Correct.
Regardless of what type of mooring there are.
Correct. There'll be a process to assess any boat that's here for the season on the mooring owned by a boatyard. Fair and equitable fee.
It's not the fee that's fair and equitable, it's the assignment.
Okay.
But the fee should also be, but.
Yeah, we can't solve the fee tonight.
Well, I had a question when your twin bio's done.
I'm done.
Okay. You were talking about the fees. Are you asking, do we have any recommendations on the fees? I know you said you were concerned about them being too high or whatever. I was just looking at their website. Mooring forty foot max, nightly is one twenty, transient parking, doesn't say if that's a slip. I don't know if transient parking sounds like a slip as opposed to a mooring, but daily sixty dollars, weekend two day pass is a hundred dollars. So, I mean, we're talking in that rough range for, um, Manchester Marine twenty, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five seasonal rate card, what it does. So do we have any recommendations, or do we have any jurisdiction or other, you know, do we have any right to tell Manchester Marine what they can charge or not? Their private business, you know? But I just wanted to, this is what their website says, so I just thought I'd mention it.
Does their website say anything about long term?
It says, um, seasonal, May fifteenth to October fifteenth. I mean, obviously, they have three hundred and twenty five dollars of, you know, it's a foot LOA. And dinghy dock space. So I mean, there's moorings and slips, they're kind of in the same section, but they're not really distinguishing in the language clearly between a mooring and a slip, in my estimation here. But they have a, they have a rate sheet, it's right on their website, has all the rates out there. I mean, it's very transparent.
Okay, so.
Summer storage, trailer storage, I mean, it's all there.
Could you, I, I don't have it in front of me, and it would be interesting to know what the seasonal, which is May fifteenth?
May fifteenth to October fifteenth. Thirty foot minimum charge, that's for a slip. Seasonal says three twenty five, um, for LOA. Nightly is eight dollars.
Three twenty five times LOA.
Yeah, okay.
That's for a slip, right?
That's for a slip.
Right, so mooring would be.
Moring is forty foot max, nightly is a hundred and twenty dollars. And then there's a section here that says transient parking. It doesn't say slip or mooring, so I don't know what it's referring to. Sixty dollars a day or a hundred dollars for a two day weekend pass. But it doesn't say if that's a slip or a mooring or both.
That's an extremely low rate. I suspect that's parking in the parking lot.
Transient parking, okay, so car parking in the parking lot. Okay.
I could be wrong, but.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds right.
They've done a good job of calling it slips, moorings, and now parking.
Yeah, cars. It's in the moorings and slip section, so.
Ignoring the one.
So then a mooring forty foot max, it says a hundred and twenty dollars a night. That's what it says. That's the only thing it has under mooring.
Well, that's a transient number.
Yeah.
I would guess. Nightly, yep. That's a transient.
I just wondered, have they spoken to you at all about the number of slips that they need to be serviced slash, slash transient? I mean, they've had ten for a long time. I don't know if they're scrambling. If they could dump into this category of rent for the season, they put more than ten in there, I don't know. But when we come out with a policy along these lines, they may start to push that ten number around, depending upon how they see the math work.
Well, if, if the board chooses to set a firm number for the number of seasonal moorings, then that's what I'll have to rely on.
Come in.
Nothing. Is this enough direction at this point, the HAC? You know what we want? We want, we want to see, uh, an equitable coming from the town, whereas, uh, people on the list. Not because you bought a boat from them, you get a mooring. I agree with that. And then fees, I guess.
Yeah. I think this is, it's going to wind up being fee driven. You'll go down a list, and the fee is going to be a certain number, and there are some people say, fine, and other people say.
Okay.
I don't know, but we can't.
In my opinion, not an equitable distribution of the use of the harbor bottom. If you say that people who have their own moorings pay one fee, but if you happen to be able, able to pay.
Hundred and twenty dollars a day.
Hundred and twenty dollars a day.
Personally, I, I see both sides of this because I do agree, I want people to be able to afford to do this. But these are spots. but these are spots that were made out of thin air. I mean, they're not spots that we would have had. It didn't take away from our moorings that we already have. So, I, I don't know how you, I, I don't know how you're gonna control what, you know, they have money in floats, they have money in servicing it every year, they've. So there's gotta be some money to be made, I mean, these guys are a business.
But, but that's on the order of.
Well, that's the order I'm talking about, I'm not talking several thousand, I'm talking hundreds.
Okay.
But where do you, you know, so you gotta take what's costing them, and then they gotta make something, but what, do we have control over that number? I don't know.
I just don't think for a private business, we have any say in how much they charge, I, I just legally.
But I agree with the, the mooring waitlist situation. If we can implement that, then it's gonna give people a chance that, that there's, there's, it's space that we couldn't have made, and it's space that somebody off the waitlist is gonna get to use. It's not a perfect situation, obviously, and I would.
What about?
Like to see some control over the number, but I don't know that we really have the authority to do that.
The, the question I have is if you're on a waitlist, and the first available waitlist is a Manchester Marine at more than what a town mooring is, do you automatically get knocked to the bottom or can you just, or you're just staying at that?
Stay on the.
Standing on the list at that same spot, you just pass over the opportunity to spend a lot more money?
Right.
But you're still way at the top, okay, that's what I want to make sure of.
So, so both models are out there. So there are communities that allow commercial operators and, and who have assigned mooring to charge whatever they want. That model's out there that hasn't been challenged from the, from the state. There are other communities that, that say no, it's, it's just as if, um, it's a, it's a town mooring, and if you want other services, it's your choice to buy those other services from the marina. But for the basic mooring, you're charged the same waterway fee as anybody else, and you don't have to pay any more for that mooring, pl- plus some maintenance for the tackle. That is, that is a typical model. So those are, those both models are out there.
And both work.
And both work.
But in this instance, you're getting a mooring with a float.
Right.
Which is not.
Which is not.
On the list. And you have to assign it.
It's an upgrade from a standard.
And I don't know what these floats cost, you probably know buy on, and when, when, when these guys say I'm getting a float, it costs X dollars, they're putting it in the water, they're splitting it between two guys. But what's the amortization for that? I don't know.
Just one more question. This past season, when we had people not on the waitlist using these moorings, um, the boatyard, let these people, was it because they bought a boat from them?
I don't, Manchester Marine doesn't sell boats.
Okay. But Crocker's does.
Crocker's does.
Crocker's does.
So.
I'm just wondering, because there is, you know, I have seen the model where, because when I was looking for a new boat, you know, they said, I can help, part of the reason some people don't buy boats is they have no place to put them, right? So it is common for a boatyard to say, I can help you out that first season by providing you with a mooring or a slip.
So that would exclude Crocker from being able to do that.
Right.
If they did, if there were sea boers on those moorings? The ones that I saw were names that I'd seen in previous years. So, I, I don't, I, I don't get involved, it's, I'm not supposed to get involved in this.
Right, I just think it's.
I, I can't, I can't state for a fact that he did not.
I'm just thinking, it's part of, it's another model that's out there, you have to be able to help people who buy their first boat. They need a place to put it.
So that would not be allowed for, for moor?
For moorings, just for slips.
Slips is another.
Right, okay.
I know that, I think Crocker does that with this.
Yeah, but slips and slips usually. I mean, I, I think we do a lot of stuff, but it, you know, we spend a lot of time thinking about businesses, and we deal with parking and all these other things. We don't really do a lot for the marinas. I don't think that, yeah, these ten moorings gonna make or break, no. I mean, I think that's a little unrealistic, but, but that aside, you know, if it, if it, we can make it work for everybody, why not? And it has, I, one point I will make is that having those docks in there and the way it's set up has made the harbor a lot better, and I would hate to see it go back the way it was. It is a lot easier to get in and out of here, but it is not.
Is it ten, um, moorings that they're, that you think they would rent or is it twenty?
I think ten. I think that they would keep fifty percent, but let's say the original ten lots would be kept for service and trains. Just, I think that they would rent the other ten, and a basket, be sure, but I think that that would.
And you, and you can stipulate, I mean, that's, that's your purview to decide what the number is.
There was also a question about, um, you know, the, the moorings, if these places ever sold, that they would enhance the value of the property, that in fact is not true. If those properties ever sell, we may not sell, sell the tackle, they can sell the floats. It's the swap that those ones are on are not for sale. If either of those properties sold, those moorings would be reassigned on the waitlist. That's the law.
So if somebody buys the business, they can't absorb that?
They cannot absorb, they can absorb the tackle, but they don't own the bottom.
So it just adds over it?
Correct. They have a license to have pilings and floats for their marina. That can be, that can go with the property, and those slips could become private slips for condo owners, no public access at all, whether you have money or not. There'd be no public access. Those mooring spots would go back into the pool and be reassigned.
Mr. Starkey?
Yes.
You've given us your introduction, you don't get to do the damn thing.
Remember who I am. I would like to point out that Manchester Marine does not own the sea bottom under their moorings. The town of Manchester does not own those, that sea bottom. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts does not own the sea bottom. Nobody owns the sea bottom, it is held in trust, doctrine of public trust by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And Chapter ninety-one and the Division of Waterways have a large number of regulations that say how this is to be administered. And the primary principle is that it has to be fair and it has to be equitable. Has to be fair to all comers. And there are many protections that are built in for people who have moorings, that do not seem to be addressed in what I've seen so far. I mean, for example, a mooring permit is good for one year, and if you apply for a renewal and you're turned down, you can appeal back to the state. And if it was done arbitrarily, then the state will reverse it. So there's, there's protection here, so somebody has a boat, they're gonna bring it here, and suddenly they're without, no place to put it, and everybody recognizes that that's a terrible thing. Now, the program that this latches on to is one that was very, is a program that was set up for somebody who's gonna be gone for a year. They could turn their mooring over to the harbor master, who could rent it out for one season to one person with the acknowledgement that the owner was gonna come back the following year, because if they didn't come back the following year, they'd lose the mooring completely. If somebody on the waiting list is going to get a mooring, they have to know that they can continue to use that mooring. Because everybody who's on that list has a boat someplace, and if they bring it here, they have to give up the, wherever it is. If they bring it here and they get bounced off after a year for no particular reason, now they're stuck with a boat and no place to put it because they've given up their other mooring. So, we are obliged under, you know, obligations to be fair and equitable to say that once somebody gets a mooring from this temporary, under, you know, the, uh, waitlist, this whole program, they'd be able to keep that until they even voluntarily give it up for something else, radically changes. So that, that's an important protection. You know, another is, but hold on, harbor master has to assign moorings. Yes?
Kathy has a question.
Oh, yeah, I thought we were talking about transient moorings, which I use transient moorings all the time, and I don't have to give up what I have, so I'm just confused.
This is the idea that Manchester Marine is renting these by the season?
But a transient, okay, so are we concerned that by renting it by the season, it's no longer falls in, it no longer falls in the transient category?
It's temporary, that's what our rules call it, it's temporary, transient is fourteen days.
Okay. So there's a definite, there's a, a real definition around the word transient and it's fourteen days?
Yeah.
Okay.
Temporary, it's a temporary program with no expectation that it's a permanent assignment.
Right. So those people probably would be people with trailers. And they've just been putting the boat in as they kind of go, because to make a decision and take it out of someplace else is a major decision, as Jim says.
The temporary program is adopted by Manchester, and my recommendation, because we use that in Kettering, it gives folks who are on the waitlist, as they move up the waitlist, the higher you are, more likely it is that, uh, you'll be offered one. Gets you a, a chance to have a mooring, maybe a couple of years before your permanent assignment comes up. But there's zero expectation that that's your permanent mooring.
I guess the question though is, I'm trying to clarify the point Jim's trying to make here. If someone takes advantage of that seasonal temporary mooring, are they obliged to give up what they already have somewhere else?
So they would, you mean in Manchester?
No, I'm saying in some other town, my boat's in Winthrop, let's say I get one of the, I take advantage of this, do I have to give up my mooring in Winthrop?
For one year. So if Winthrop allows you to leave your mooring vacant for a season, other than that, we have, you know.
Right.
Yeah, it, it does, I can't imagine, if somebody came to Manchester, but went from Manchester to Marblehead for a year instead of leaving my mooring vacant every other year, by the rule, they can do that. As a matter of fact, we have some, two people.
You're allowed to have your mooring empty for a year.
Yeah.
A season, I guess.
But you'd also have to be at the top, near the top of the waitlist to do it.
That depends on what they're charging.
Yes, no.
And you could, you skipped off the.
Well, I mean, I don't, I mean, I hate to say this, but I don't think, you know, money is gonna be a factor for some people, but you're not gonna get too far down that list before you fill that.
So I guess the other question is, you're on a temporary, uh, mooring, but then if permanent mooring becomes available while you're on that temporary, you can, you can move off the temporary and go on to the permanent.
Absolutely.
You haven't lost, you haven't lost any.
Well, is Manchester Marine gonna expect the fee for the full season because you?
At least, that's, that's them, if they sign a contract, maybe, believe they are obligated.
Mr. Starkey?
Yes. Um, as I was saying, if somebody gets into this program, they move a boat from someplace else, they need to be fair and equitable, they need to be able, and if it makes sense, if you're assigning people to temporary, to rental moorings from the top of the waiting list, so they qualify one year, why would you take it away from them? But that needs to be part of the regulation, otherwise it's completely utterly unfair. Another, on the temporary mooring program, it doesn't say it has to come from the waiting list. It says primarily from the waiting list, that doesn't say it comes from the top.
It does say primarily.
The new one that we were looking at, I.
So the way it's, the way it's written right now, if they want to rent to somebody a mooring, to somebody who's prepared to pay him ten thousand dollars, you say, okay, we can do that. All you need to do is go to town hall, pay ten dollars to put on the waiting list, you're on the bottom, but we can rent to you.
So I think that is the point, that's the point that the select board is making tonight, is we want the waiting list taken in order of those people.
That is the only thing that is fair. Yes.
Yes, that, we're all in agreement on that.
There has to be, if we're going to assign people to moorings, there has to be, you know, consumer protections, things that don't apply to people with private moorings. So, for example, if, if somebody signs up for a rental mooring from Manchester Marine, they go away for the weekend, they come back, find that Manchester Marine has rented that to a transient, what happens? Right now, nothing, they don't, they're, they just, they have no records whatsoever. So there really has to be some, a great deal more protection here. Doesn't that become an issue between Manchester Marine?
Yeah.
And it's a, it's a civil issue between, uh, the person who's renting that mooring and Manchester Marine.
That happened to a private mooring. And yes, it happens from time to time that people pick up other people's moorings, then the harbor master would intervene. And perhaps one of the things we have to think about is if somebody has a complaint about some issue with Manchester Marine, they should be able to appeal first to the harbor master, and then, God help us, to us.
There should also be some sort of protection where even though you started at the top of the waitlist, you don't go all the way to the bottom. Because if somebody says, okay, I'm willing to pay ten thousand dollars, and you offer everybody at the top of the waiting list, you know, you want it for ten thousand dollars, and you get down to the guy at the bottom and he says, okay, we're golden, well, that doesn't work either. If we put in something like, you're not eligible to be in this until you've been on the waiting list for three years. So, that would take care of that.
The waitlist is about twenty years long?
Yeah.
Four hundred and.
It's twenty, over twenty years.
Thirty-five names, if we go down through the first seven, and the seven take it, and then three hundred and fifty refuse it. And we get to the three hundred and fifty-eighth, and they say, I'll take it, and the three hundred and fifty-nine, as long as you start at the top and go from one, two, in order, all the way down, that's acceptable.
I would argue that having some requirement for having been on the waitlist for some period of time would avoid the way of doing corruption where, and Manchester Marine is not this kind of a company, this is not this kind of a town, but I worry about things like this happening. Manchester Marine says, we can give you a place to put your boat, it's gonna be twenty-five thousand dollars a season. Somebody picks, somebody puts his name on the bottom of the waiting list, nobody says twenty-five thousand dollars, he gets the mooring, Manchester Marine says, hey, let's put, we'll put half of that towards your guarantee.
I don't know how that could happen, I'm the one who's making sure that the list is being observed. So that would mean, you know.
That would mean that there is somebody who's on the waiting list, he's at the bottom, he's been on it for three days, they charge something exorbitant, and then.
To deliberately disincentivize people from saying yes.
Yes.
Very nefarious.
I have an evil mind.
Voting world.
Wow, that's why I have a convertible.
Really, things, things like this do, can happen. And, and, so I was like, some.
I mean, I'm fine with that, but I, I think realistically, I mean, you have a waiting list that's twenty years long, even if you said five years, you're gonna still be near the bottom of the list.
But you can't be somebody who's just been put on this two days.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose anything's possible, but I don't.
Do a deal and say, hey, you, you decide you're gonna charge a hundred thousand dollars for this slip, for this mooring, everyone's gonna pass over, and then.
Yeah, it gets to his buddy.
This guy, and this guy is buying a hundred thousand, it's, god, we're spending an awful lot of time on Netflix, yeah.
Well, would, would the check and balance be that we could ask that they report, uh, either Manchester Marine or the voters, what the fee is going to be for that season in advance? If we know in advance what they're charging, uh, for this mooring.
So they say that.
Somebody says, uh, yeah, no, I paid fifty thousand, a hundred, whatever the number is. Somebody says, uh, yeah, no, I paid fifty thousand, a hundred, whatever the number is. That, that would be a pretty big red flag, but.
I, I think you've got to look at.
Okay.
Something's gotta be reasonable and customary.
In order to.
And they have slips in the harbor. I mean, we know what the slips in the harbor are. I mean, they can't go crazy.
We have to, we have to rely on the harbor master.
This harbor master is great. We have had harbor masters in the past for whom.
We can play that game, we can play that game with anyone, you know, as far as talks and records, you know.
Just assume not have a place in the harbor where you could buy the police a new set of uniforms and suddenly you've got four moorings. And that did happen.
I, I think it's reasonable. I mean, I can't remember exactly other scenarios where I've encountered what you're proposing, but I, I, I think that's a reasonable assertion, you know. Some, we don't want someone who just got on the waiting list, right? So some, whether it's one, two, even one year, you know, two years, three, you know. I, I think that's a reasonable thing for the HAC to chew over and.
Come back to us.
And come back to us with their recommendation. I don't think we need to meet the deadlines yet.
See, you know.
Yes.
Mr. Struckey.
Yes, one other thing I want to touch on, and that is after our last mooring scandal, where viewers who weren't here. We went three years above anybody coming off the waiting list, but the number of moorings didn't go down. The town passed this by law, harbor by law, I hope you have already. And it requires that documentation be posted both on the website and the town hall. This has not been honored. But anyway, going forward, if we're gonna have a rental program, it has to be transparent. There has to be a list of the people who've got these moorings. There has to be some.
I've seen, okay, by on.
Yeah, I've seen the list.
Through the chair, I've been online and I've personally looked at the list myself, so.
This, is this the mooring list, the waiting list, or the transient list?
Transactions.
What's a transaction? When a mooring changes hands?
Done here.
Not up there. You see that year? That's the year that mooring changed hands.
Read the bylaw, by on.
Jim, thank you.
I want to see your, you know.
We are, we are tired.
There has to be transparency.
Agreed.
There has to be a list, there has to be stickers.
Uh, transparency is, we can, we can request that the harbor advisory committee come up with a regulation that is transparent. I don't think it's up to us right now to decide what color the sticker. Um, I think the committee is done with this subject.
I think we're done.
I, I think HAC's got enough info.
I move that we move on to the next agenda item. Does anyone like to second that?
Second, good.
Okay. Okay. Um, the next one is Ocean Street options. So you're after that, Mr. Miller. Greg.
So as I think all of you know, we were working on a grant application. We submitted a grant application for pretty extensive review of options, a public input process, getting on board engineers to help us understand what is likely to be permissible through the state, et cetera. Roughly a two hundred thousand dollar effort, eighty percent of that was already paid for grant. So the grants that we have applied for to date have not been awarded. We were turned down. We were here on Wednesday. We had a chance to talk to the grantor to hear what we could have done to make our application a little more competitive. And hopefully we'll get some insights on, on that to, to reapply, which is certainly an option to do. There's some additional grant opportunities that will be coming, you know, this, this winter and into spring, which we certainly can apply again. We could, as an alternative, look at sort of breaking pieces of this out. For example, there's an opportunity to team up with NA PC through their, what they call the District Local Technical Assistance Grants, the LTA. That we could perhaps do some sort of public dialogue, at least just to get people talking about different concerns and issues and possibilities. Obviously, that's not gonna get us the engineering piece. There's the ability to maybe just get an opinion, more of a letter review. Either from, most likely from a consulting engineer to focus on what's the likelihood of, of different scenarios being permitted. That would obviously not be that full two hundred thousand dollar cost. So maybe there's a way to get some opinions and some more data to help us have those discussions with the public. So we have a range of next steps. We could try to break it into pieces and try to get some of those pieces funded and underway. We can reapply the whole original application and just resubmit that to upcoming grant funds. You can look at putting some town dollars into this. We were looking at a twenty percent match. So that twenty thousand dollar range is what we were anticipating. You know, putting in the full two hundred thousand on town capital budget, that would be a challenge to do. Something would have to give, something else would have to give in order to make that work. But it's, as I always like to say, budgets are about choices, so that's, that's another choice that is possible. But anyways, those are the range of choices that I see before us right now.
So if we do nothing, how much do we spend a year maintaining Ocean Street?
Well, that's probably a good guess for Chuck to chime in on. You know, it's in the, you know, ten to twenty thousand dollar range, perhaps.
I don't know if that was higher.
Uh, am I low on that, Chuck? Is it higher than that?
No, I was gonna say ten to twenty. I mean, you know, certainly there's, you know, potential of more catastrophic danger with all of these storms, but you know, we're generally in a responded repair type thing, and I think ten to twenty is pretty, pretty accurate.
But the sidewalk there is.
Yeah, well, I mean, Mother Nature wants.
But sidewalks are in pretty bad shape.
I, I would think we could maybe spend a little more and, and have the sidewalk be passable. There is a big walking area.
Yeah.
And you come around the corner and, and, and people will, I have to walk in the street. But, okay, that's still not gonna take it up to.
No, no, I'm thinking about, oh, myself.
So I, I like your idea, Greg, of splitting, my frustration with the Ocean Street situation is, when did we start this discussion? I mean, it was before I was on the board.
Oh, it goes back quite a few years, but.
Quite a few years. So I think what personally I'd like to see is what are those options? We, it feels like we, we discount some options because we're afraid they may not be permitted. But we don't necessarily have hard evidence of that. So I, I think I heard you say one first step might be, you say an engineer spent twenty thousand, not an engineer, but design choices. I forget how you just phrased it.
We could, we could seek an engineer for him to give us an overview of the options and their permitability.
Okay, all right. I, I think that personally is a.
I mean, it may be hard for them to do that without, I, I, I don't know what they would charge for that. We'd have to ask.
I think that's worth asking personally, just because there is the potential that we can't keep it the way it is. There's also the potential that keeping it the way it is might be viable if the town is willing to spend the money to do it. We, we don't know, but I just feel like really clarifying the options is something that the residents have been asking for, and I think we owe them at least that. That's one piece of feedback. The other piece of feedback is we've tried multiple times to go after grants, it sounds like, and we haven't been successful in any of them. Definitely am looking forward to that feedback that you get on Wednesday. But at some point, you know, the old saying, if, if you're, if you, the definition of insanity is to keep doing the same thing over and over again and expect a different result.
Is it, Bethany?
Sure.
Um, the previous application for a grant, we withdrew our application. It was not that it was turned down.
So there was only one other submission and we withdrew it?
Um, well, we, we had, years ago, we had this submitted that was successful, but because of its too heavy emphasis on retreat, basically. It was, it was.
Turned down.
Turned down.
Okay.
I'm trying to, I think there was another one between that one and this one that we just submitted, like.
So I guess my.
Not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. I have to double check.
I think that, you know, certainly getting the feedback from the grantor and why our submission, submission was not accepted is, is valuable. But I also think we need to kind of have a plan B here. And the first step is understanding what our options are, and then one option for funding, any of those solutions is a grant. But there must be other options for funding as well, and I, I'd like to see us work things in parallel as opposed to serially, you know. Wait till we see the results of the grant and then let's figure out what we're gonna do. I, I think we can have parallel plans and be a little more walking and chewing of gum at the same time. That's kind of my feedback.
Could we be creative?
Yeah.
And say, and say something that the walkway, everything scenic and open space.
Absolutely.
And go for some CPA money.
I was gonna ask this question.
Lots of different options.
All right, I mean, there's, there's gotta be, because of the location.
Right.
And how many people enjoy just walking along.
That's right.
Maybe that falls into purview that we can tap some money over.
Yeah, are we spending too much money worrying about cars? Like, there's different ways, different, different ways of solving the problem to give residents what they're asking for. And, and, and letting nature do more than it's doing today, you know. So I just.
Seems very nature-like.
It's, I, I just think we really need those options.
That's something we talked to Mr. Burke about, or something we can.
Yeah, we can, we can have that conversation.
So I got a question. So that road goes way back to the, I've seen it on maps, even in the seventeen hundreds. Have we ever looked into having it deemed a historic way and is there, is there more opportunities for grants around that or?
Uh, I'm not sure. I mean, there was an original public launch.
Right.
Back in the, I think in the seventeen hundreds, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know if it goes back, back that, anyways, right, there's a long history.
Cause I mean, Manchester actually started down there. It wasn't even up here. So I'm just wondering, maybe there's an avenue to explore there or?
Let's be creative, let's be creative.
Let's look at our options. Quick pass through, what are the options, right? And then that can tell us what we might want to delve deeper in, you know, by talking with the residents and getting input from, you know, the residents, where we might want to dig deeper. But I just feel like we've been trying to go one, go down one path and.
And I, I agree with you, Kathy, when you say, let's stop thinking about cars and let's, if we can stop thinking about a walkway and open space, that allows us some other opportunities.
So if people like to drive their cars through the.
I do all the time.
I do, I do all the time.
I don't know.
Are there, Greg, are there grant cycles that just keep on going that every year there's an opportunity or something?
Some of these are on a annual or semi-annual basis.
Okay. And there are big grants and there are little grants. And if you go after a little grant, maybe it's easier than a big grant, but you don't necessarily get all the answers you want. I mean, we need scenarios here.
We need scenarios. That's what I'm.
From a professional, from, from professional people. You know, something that you can put down, you get your hands around and say, okay, what do we think the regulators are gonna think about?
But I think what you're saying is very important, John, and we, we need those scenarios ASAP because people have been waiting years for this. And I, I, it feels like we're, the tail is wagging the dog. We're waiting for the grants to come up with the scenarios. I say, we figure out what it's gonna cost to get the scenarios, just a first pass of creative, high level, like we did for the rotunda, you know. And then decide where we want to spend the bigger money to delve deeper on a subset of those scenarios, you know, once we get the resident input. We, we've gotta get, even if it's ten, ten wild scenarios, let, let's get something on paper.
You know, if you break it up into, you know, three or four different projects, each one's a separate scenario or something.
Can the town afford fifty K to go do this, you know?
I was gonna say, and then maybe some town resources.
Yeah, C P C might be, that's a great suggestion. I, I just think we shouldn't.
That's, that's creative.
You know, let's not worry about the grants so much.
Jack has a dog in this fight too.
Yeah, that's right. The point.
Chuck Dyer has his, has his.
Hey, ready? So, I mean, I, I guess, you know, we, we have done some of these things. I don't feel like we've just gone for grants. Like, I, I've talked to several engineers, and I think the, the problem with just like, you know, having them give us a, you know, likely scenario with current, like, I think they, that's reasonable, we can do that. But the, the part that is really, you know, the heavy lifting is the coastal zone management analysis of the wave inundation and the climate, you know, the sea level rise and the storm surge impacts. And like, that's the level of professionalism that we don't have to speak to these problems. And it's not just the barrier beach issue or the roadway issue. It's, there's the whole ecosystem behind it, the marsh and the connectivity under the culvert. Greg, that was the other grant that we did go at was looking at the culvert, which would have lent itself to the, you know, sidewalk as it approaches the culvert and going around there. We've also done, doing restoration in that area. We've looked at that. So like, I feel like we have done, I think we're starting a little bit short. I mean, I, I wouldn't call myself a coastal engineer, you know, expert. However, I have talked to quite a few. And the, you know, just talking to them, the feedback that I always get is that, you know, walls are not formidable. Racing the road is not necessarily formidable, let alone very expensive. So like, we, we do have that level. I mean, you know, I, I feel like that's, you know, worth mentioning now. I will say, I, I do like the idea of, you know, maybe more pedestrian, you know, friendly and protected. The, the reason, you know, we, we have strived to keep the sidewalk that is there, because it's not a full sidewalk the entire way. But the sidewalk that is there, to keep it passable, I, I think it is passable. We use the desvery for strong. The reason we have not paved it is because that does not address the issue that's causing the degradation of the sidewalk, which is the rubble wall and the subbase material underneath that that gets hit with waves, you know, twice a day with the tide cycle. So like, there, there are some things that it's not, it's not quite as easy as it might seem to address, which has, hasn't been addressed. Um, and I, I do think that, you know, with the surge and the, you know, the storm that we see on a regular basis now, the ten to twenty thousand dollar reconstruction. If, if, I'll, I'll get a price, I'll, I'll take a look. I'm not as, well, afraid of it, but like, you know, if, if we get into doing the subbase and the topco on that sidewalk every year, like, that's a, that's a fairly significant expense on an annual basis. So that makes that ten thousand, twenty thousand dollar number go up. So, you know, like, you can't, like, I, I know it, you know, we, we would like to be able to wait a magic one, but there, there is no, you know, substitute for some of the stuff that we're talking about.
Can I ask you this, Chuck? So to, to patch that wall up enough to slow this situation down, what, what's that look like?
So we don't have a good, uh, I, I don't have a good answer for how much it costs. The, the problem is we don't know the extent of the voids behind the wall. And so, and then to, and take on this, you know, I, I do think there may be a backboard where you take on a certain linear footage every, every year or certain, you know, it's a ten thousand, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, like, we can do some sort of annual contract to, you know, like, do that maintenance. However, we don't really know what the extent is. So we don't know if that, you know, pick a number, ten to twenty thousand, we don't know whether that's going to address, you know, thirty square, you know, linear feet of wall or a hundred linear feet of wall. And that's kind of the issue when you try to, you know, get into the details here. And, and then, you know, we also have the permitting requirements, which, you know, that would definitely be permissible to restore that, you know, that wall as is. However, that might not solve the long-term issue, won't solve the long-term issue. So, you know, we're coming, you know, kind of like, what's the return on investment? So, you know, I'm not saying that we can't look harder at that. I'm just saying like, these are some of the, you know, reasons why we haven't been able to get a good solid footing on it.
I, I'm not saying as a forever situation, but as a, you know, twenty, thirty year fix or twenty year fix, maybe that gets us by for a while. Or maybe it's, maybe it's not worth it.
Well, that, that's the engineering that we have to pay for, right? Like, you know, if you told me what the, you know, wave inundation on a regular basis and what the, you know, we literally. you know, we literally did this when we had to repair the seawall over on, um, on, uh, St. Beach was, you know, we had to do like a, a wave analysis. Like, there, you know, there's engineering that actually goes into this, that, you know, is well beyond my expertise. And so that's, you know, that's the, that's what we haven't paid for yet.
Right.
I mean, I can get a scope and do that. I mean, we, we have looked at other scopes, um, you know, with engineers. I, I think it was more kind of, again, the long-term planning level, not necessarily the short-term repairs. So like, you know, that's definitely the next step that, you know, I can track down on, you know, on a short-term basis, you know, very quickly.
Yeah.
So Greg?
That'd be something I'd be interested in seeing anyway.
For sure.
So Greg, I think part of the issue, Chuck is right, a lot of stuff has been done, but it's been done over such a long period of time that, you know, sometimes people aren't aware of it because they, maybe they didn't even live here, right? So I just think when we, I, I really liked the way we approached the rotunda. I mean, we, we came up with some options, wound up being four. One of them, I think, wound up being not viable. But we had a public forum. What do you want this to look like? What do you want this to be? We took it in chunks, right? But it, it felt more compressed so we could make a real decision without dragging it out for so long that people forget what happened and what we learned. I mean, it's just been dragging on for so long. I'd just like to see some urgency around options and decisions. Uh. We don't.
I agree with that, but I think we need a short-term, maybe a little better solution, and then a long-term solution.
But I think that's, that, that's, to me, those are options, right?
Right.
And, and it's just, there's a lot, been a lot of work done, you know, behind the scenes. I don't think we've presented everything to the town in a condensed way that's easy for people to absorb and understand. I, I certainly have.
I agree, I agree with this.
It just.
Think or accumulate everything we've done so far and take a look at it all.
That would be a good first step, but I, I, I think there are probably, like, you just came up with some other options tonight that maybe have not been considered before. So I think that's all part of laying out what those options are, including what work has already been done. Maybe we had to discount some options because of, of some reasons, but it's not easy to figure all this out if you're just a resident looking for information. It's all over.
You might find out there is no long-term option.
I don't know. I, the information is, part of it's in Chuck's brain, some of it's in old documents. I mean, it's just all over the place.
Would it make sense, as one of us stands options, to approach an engineering company and set a price for?
That doesn't hurt.
Is that hard?
And, and.
Now we need to figure out how we're gonna pay for it.
Exactly. Instead of worrying about getting money.
It might be a fifty thousand dollar, uh, price tag for engineering, and maybe we find other ways of finding that money without going for grants, you know, without hurting our, uh, our budgetary process either.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
That makes sense.
And I, I mean, most of these grants we've gone for, Greg, have been the CZM, bigger type grants. Is that a fair statement, or have we gone for little ones?
Chuck, I'm talking about the, uh, the culvert. That was a smaller ask.
I just think smaller is easier.
The CZM, I mean, it was, was huge. It was a hundred and seventy-some odd thousand.
It was capital money.
But, but nonetheless.
Now, Chairman, I've had my hand raised for ten minutes. May I speak?
Um, I didn't, I'm sorry, I.
Just thought now.
Okay. Yes, you may.
Chuck Furlong, Nineteen Ocean Street. Brendan and I have lived here for thirty years. So we have a lot of history with the road, a lot of history with the town administrator, and a lot of history with the DVW. Nothing has happened in that thirty years. Not even minimal maintenance has occurred. Now we've reached a crisis point, and I immediately challenged Mr. Dam's statement that no seawall is permissible. All he has to do is go to Essex, and he can find one along the Essex River. He can simply go to Endicott College and find a revetment that was permitted there within the past two years. He can go to Windra, and he can find a seawall that was permitted there. So let's put that out of the thinking. It's poppycock. It's not true. So let's get to facts, and let's also talk about the value of the grants. The grant that was proposed in two thousand eighteen by Mr. Fettersfield was a twenty-six thousand dollar grant, and its sole articulated purpose was to abandon Ocean Street and make it a barrier beach. Twenty-six thousand dollars. The current one, before the CZM, was one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, and I had the pleasure of speaking with a coordinator who is responsible for all of the coasts from Revere to Salisbury today. And the bottom line is, we did not have a competitive proposal at a one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar bid. So I encourage you to do some fresh thinking and to be much more candid about what's happened over the past ten to fifteen years.
Thank you, Mr. Furlong. Okay, um, let's, let's get pricing.
Chuck's got his hand up.
Let, let's make sure, um, let's make sure that, um, the company that includes studying or understanding how other communities have been able to put up barriers.
Yeah, and I just think the takeaway here is focus on finding solutions, focus less on getting the grant money, focus first on, let's do what we need to do to identify solutions, and then we'll figure out how we pay for it. Is it with grants or taxation? I just think we're, we need to change our perspective a little.
Well, the grant that was submitted would have given us a very comprehensive, that would have given you what you needed.
Yes, yes, understand that.
If we funded, we would have been in good shape here.
And we're gonna find out why they didn't.
Right, couple of days.
In a couple of days, we'll find out why it was, you know, we can tweak it if we have to.
But you can extract out of that something that's more focused.
There's some pieces.
It's not like you gotta reinvent anything here. You can go and, and focus and go to an engineering firm. We need a scenario for this.
Okay. I would like to hear from Mr. Dam, Mr. Dam, um.
I will, I'll give a brief in, and I will, I will be respectful of everybody's time.
And that really is where you're standing, also not, not, not calling each other names and things like that.
I'm, I'm not gonna call anybody's name, but I will, I will just say to the board, I have no incentive to lie about my conversations with regulators or other engineers or anything else. If you think that's what I'm all about, then you haven't been paying attention. And I would just say that for everybody in town on all of our projects. I am more open and honest with everything that I do and everything my department does than anyone else I can imagine. So like, I will not have my character questioned about something so trivial as a seawall when I have had these conversations and I have done this work. Uh, and then I would also say, I am an engineer, and if you put a seawall in front of all of that roadway, you have a, uh, salt marsh behind you. Where does that water go? Water has to go in both directions. So I will not be talked to like that by anybody. And I just want that to be very clear. And I, I will tell you, I have a seventy thousand dollar study in the can. I will send it to everybody tomorrow. I think I've shared it with the neighborhood association that I reach out to regularly, and I ask for input regularly. So I, I just want that to be very clear, and I will send it tomorrow morning for everybody to look at. And we can fund it as much as we want, but it's not gonna change the bottom line or the things that I have been told from people that I trust and are more knowledgeable about this than me. And I'll leave it at that, and I thank you for the time.
I understand your feeling, Mr. Dam. Thank you. Is there another hand up?
Mr. London, Chasse's.
Oh.
Uh, I'm too old to say much of relevance, but I've studied Ocean Street for a long time, a little coiled. And, uh, well, the problem is, it used to be the, be road from Manchester to Gloucester. And Roosevelt in, uh, nineteen, say, thirty-five, he built twelve twenty-seven, and since then, I think, there's been no money spent on Ocean Street. And one of the things is, is that the, uh, the infrastructure is just calm and the low cement was used, it's not, uh, uh, able to resist the ocean, uh, and saltness, the salt, it starts to come from the ocean. But I suggest I just write a little memo to Mr. Dam, who really knows what's happening, and give my view. And I think Chuck Furlong, he's watching it black hole too. And, uh, the issue is, uh, do we abandon Ocean Street or not? That's the main issue. And, uh, I was counting on, uh, getting grants to, to kick it down the road till I'm gone. I'm eighty-four. And, uh, but these grants are drying up, and I think we have to face the music ourselves. And, uh, this, I'll leave it at that, and I'll send a message to Chuck Dam and Chuck Furlong, and let them look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Chuck, Dan, do you, do you have your hand up again, or is that from last time?
Sorry, that was last round. No, I'm good.
Dan must be tired.
I think what we're, we have come from this is we should get a quote from an engineering company, considering a variety of possibilities. Someone should see if there's a way that it's either historic or natural.
Or both.
Or both. And, and could, some, some work could be done on CBC money. Uh, but there is a numerous amount of engineering money that has to go into this after we've gone through. I mean, this is a much bigger project than, than a rotunda.
Absolutely. But you gotta start somewhere, right? You gotta start somewhere. And then I, I do think we need public feedback from, you know, let's see what the first set of options are. Let's get some public feedback so we're not spending money. Let's say they come back with five options. We may not want to spend that.
You gotta prioritize.
All fine. You gotta prioritize. I think it's important to get the public input before we do that.
The, the other issue here is, I don't want to keep on asking a question until we get the answer we want to hear.
Right.
All right. There might be something that no one's gonna hear, that everyone comes across and says the same thing, and it's, it's, it's the least favorable answer. But I don't want to keep on just going back. Well, let's go find another engineering firm that's gonna tell us something else.
We need facts.
Exactly.
We need facts.
And we have to repair.
But we have to maintain at least one side of that road to Crow Island, right?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Absolutely. You have to maintain the road to save it.
It's not like you can abandon the whole entire road.
No, no, no. And that's, again, we have, that's, that, that goes without saying.
So then it's how much are you saving by giving up half a road?
Let's find out.
Right. No, I know. I'm just.
That's, that is exactly what some of the options are that we need. That's what we need. We need the options, and we need the public input to prioritize.
So the action is to come back, eh, the December second or the December, December sixteenth, maybe, um, with, um, an idea of a quote that the town could fund to, um, look at possibilities.
Then, uh, Mr. Gilbert, has his hand up?
Mr. Gilbert?
Good evening. Thank you. Um, could you just clarify for the record? Um, I remember being at the planning board meeting, I don't know, eight years ago or something, when they were discussing getting grant money to do what I thought would, it was described to me as an open-ended study to see what our options, our engineering options were. I heard it tonight characterized as a study proposal to close the road off, and I never thought that was the case. And I'd like that clarified because obvious, it seems obvious to me what we need is an open-ended, honest, um, objective study as to what our options are.
We're discussing that.
Okay. Um, we want to take it from old, where, that we, we.
Eight years ago.
Eight years ago.
Mr. Fer, Mr. Fer, I refer to that, that, as he said, it was a, a very modest amount. It had a focus on whether or not, on, on the possibility of abandoning the short stretch along White Beach. Um, it did have some additional studies included. That wasn't the only option, but that was one of the, uh, primary focuses of that effort. It wasn't the exclusive effort, but that became, um, a very strong lightning rod. So, uh, the decision was to, to not move forward with that, and here we are. So.
When you say abandon the road, close it or just make it a dead end? In other words, no longer a horseshoe?
No longer a horseshoe. That's the stretch on White Beach.
So you go to White Beach, that's it? Make a U-turn, turn around?
Correct.
And if you want to go Black Beach, it goes out to Crow Island, and that's, okay.
No walkway across the top?
Yeah, there was talk about, but that, we didn't get that far.
Okay.
We didn't get that far. It's not really worth going into the details.
Just in general, that was the concept.
Anyway, I think it's helpful. I just, we, it's much bigger than the rotunda. It was very nice to see all of the options all at once laid out so we could figure out what we wanted to do. But the piecemeal information is just not helping us move forward.
Is that two thousand eighteen study in the, uh, website somewhere or something?
It was a proposal. It never, it never.
It was just a proposal, right?
It never took place.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I think we have an action. I think we've talked about this a lot. I think we have input from some of the neighbors and from the town engineer.
Move to close the public area.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a land purchase proposal. And Greg has given us on that. Greg, you want to introduce this, and, and then I think we should hopefully hear from Mr. Miller.
Sure. Um, Mr. Miller approached, approached me and asked the question about whether or not, what, what would be the process for pursuing the possibility of purchasing a piece of town land? And, uh, I indicated that it's a fairly lengthy process, it involves lots of steps, uh, and suggested that as a first step, test the water, so to speak, with the board, with the select board, to see if there's any interest in, in having it go beyond this initial conversation. Uh, so that's what brings us here tonight. Uh, the process, as I say, if, if, to go through it, is, is fairly involved. It, uh, it requires town meeting to authorize sale of land. Any sale of town public lands has to go through a public bidding process. Uh, and, uh, so there, there's multiple steps that would have to be gone through. Uh, you would want to get the input from various boards and committees, planning board, uh, conservation commission, open space. Uh, so there's lots of, lots of, uh, opinions to, uh, to solicit, and, uh, there's a different process to undertake. But nonetheless, uh, I thought this would be a starting point with the discussion to see if it wants to go further or not. So I think Mr. Miller is, uh, is on, online here in Zoom, and can perhaps, um, give a short overview of what his, what his thinking has been.
Yeah. Thank you very much. You, you can hear me, hopefully?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, thank you for your time. Uh, great, great introduction, uh, great summary. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. Uh, I know your time is valuable. Um, I'm a third-generation Manchester resident, um, uh, looking at, uh, family members who are gonna be fourth generation. Uh, I've lived in, uh, West Manchester pretty much all my life, uh, built a house in the woods by Brookwood School in, uh, two thousand eight. Uh, my, my grandpa bought the land in nineteen forty-something. Um, the parcel in Quayle. The parcel in question abuts a piece of property that we own. It's also surrounded on three sides by conservation land. Property in question is of extreme interest to me simply because I've lived next to it for a very long time. It's got characteristics that are very appealing. It's got incredible sort of rock face detail. It's got a stone wall that is straight as an arrow, runs five hundred feet in the middle of nowhere. It's a very interesting piece of property that I would love to see preserved. It's, I believe this piece of property has been in town possession since nineteen fifty-five. The piece of property also appears on very, very old maps. I think it's the heirs of the Ober family or something like that. But it goes way back. Again, I think the town took it over in fifty-five. And it's been great. It's been great to have next to our property. But I would be very interested in, you know, for future generations of my family, as well as Manchester Essex Conservation Trust, in possibly acquiring the property, giving a good chunk of it, maybe fifty percent, to the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust, holding on to the other half for my family. We've lived there for quite a while. We have two houses on twenty acres. We're also, I think we have a high reverence for that part of town. We're very interested in preserving the character of that part of town. But that probably means nothing. You know, I understand that this has to go through, you know, extensive process. And I'm willing to begin that process. Just wanted to explain my interest in obtaining the property and hoping that you can help me kind of understand what the next steps might be. And hopefully, starting on that path.
Questions from the board first?
Yeah, I can start with a couple. So it sounds like your motivation is that you want to kind of keep the property the way it is. I'm not sure that that changes its situation right now. I mean, it's owned by the town, but it really is landlocked. I don't foresee anything changing in that for quite a long time. It really is surrounded by conservation land and really kind of becomes conservation land just because of its environment. Is there something beyond that? Or you just want to, you know? What's behind the acquisition other than it changes ownership?
Yeah, good question. You know, it is true that on three sides, it's conservation lands. The southern border is owned by my family. Long-term, and again, you know, this was kind of the vision. If we're going to get sort of, I'm going to get sort of sentimental here. My grandfather had, when he purchased the property in the nineteen forties, said, hey, this might be of interest, of value to future generations in the family. That is, that's the motivation. That half of the property, I think, would continue to, would be memorialized in conservation lands. And then half would be part of my family's holdings there for future generations. So we have no specific plans. If you look on the map, it's pretty isolated. Be very hard to, you know, do any kind of development. But in the future, who knows? You know, I've got daughters who I think would be interested in maybe, or they're showing my interest. But answering your question, no specific plans, but simply to expand possibilities in that part of town for my family. Again, I think we've been very judicious in our use of the land in terms of, you know, putting houses on the property. And now we continue.
Okay, well, I just, I have a couple of concerns. One, that the town doesn't have enough property, to be honest, in terms of things that we want to do. And I'm not saying that this particular piece of property is something that we look at to do anything with. But just in general, I get concerned about when we unload property when we're always looking for other places, for new places to do things. And second, Greg had mentioned that there's some sort of an auction process. That puts everything in jeopardy. Because I don't know who else is out there. But, and I understand for the, you know, for the public, you really have to get the best deal that you can. And an auction certainly exposes, exposes that land to perhaps somebody else who's got other plans.
Yeah, definitely. I hear that concern. I share that concern. You know, I think to your point, opening that up for any sort of use that would be unappealing would be extremely difficult. Building, when we built our house back there, we had to contend with Brookwood School. They have a stake in that part of town. There are access restrictions that are so contingent on Brookwood Road. And the very old Brookwood Road and access rights, which, if I understand correctly, are controlled by family members who are on that street. So it would be very difficult for an outsider or somebody, you know, to sort of take that land and do some sort of exotic things with it. I think, to be honest, I think the options are first, you know, sort of, sort of put that into conservation lands or, you know, sort of merge it with the other land there to potentially, you know, have one house on there at some point in the future. I don't think it, you know, by opening up, I understand, I understand your, and this is completely valid. It is a risk. But I think the legal barriers to doing anything other, and this is permanent, this is not, this is not expiring. So a hundred years from now, there's going to still be these restrictions on doing anything in that land other than maybe, you know, single-family home. Anything else would be prohibited. The school would fight it. My family would fight it. And I don't think it would succeed without, I just don't think it would succeed. So I hear your concerns.
Thank you.
Okay.
I echo John's concerns. We've talked about, I want to have land back. I want to have land that we can trade, conservation land, so we can take that land out of conservation. We have to, I'm moving on.
So I can, could you speak a little?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, to John's point. As we don't have enough land to borrow it.
We, we the town.
We the town. Okay. An example being, if we were to try to expand affordable housing over Newport Park, we'd have to look into swapping out conservation land around Newport Park. And I believe it's, the ratio is three to one. We have to give back three acres of land, four acres of land. And as long as this piece of property is not in a conservation trust, we can do that, do this.
I see.
You know, we are sorely lacking in housing, affordable housing. And here's an opportunity. If at some point we decide we want to expand Newport Park, we can take this land and put it to conservation trust. And that's my big concern. I would also wonder, is there really a property tax advantage by selling it? How much money do the town receive? And I think that we're better off, in John's case, holding on to the land for future use, for future opportunities. That's my view.
Yeah, I agree.
Jeff?
Actually, this is a question for Greg. So I know that a town can only purchase a piece of land. It has to be within whatever that value is, it's like ten percent or something, right?
Typically, ten percent plus or minus of appraised value.
What happens if a town sells a piece of land? And sky's limit, or is there anything?
So you can't, you can't sell it for less
Than it's worth.
Than it's appraised. But you can, if there's a willing buyer, you can sell it for more.
Right. So say if you put up an auction, you could put a reserve at
Yes.
Whatever you wanted.
Right. And you, and you can put other conditions, you know, if the buyer's willing to accept those conditions. And that is something that communities do sometimes.
Yeah.
So they, you know, maybe, maybe put a development restriction on the property. So that's, that is an option.
I guess my problem with it is, you know, the assessed value is twenty thousand. By the time we spin our wheels and deal with auctioneers, I mean, you know what I mean? We've got to be making considerably more than that to make it worth our while. I would say I'm kind of in these guys' camp, but I'm not against looking at it again down the road.
I think that's a good way of saying it, Jeff. I feel like we don't have a good strategy right now.
I think there are some other people, before we decide what we're doing.
No, no, I'm just, there, yeah. Yeah, I just feel like, I just wanted, I was very brief before. I'm never brief, so, I'm sorry. I just wanted to, I feel like we don't have a strategy for our land utilization. And I would feel more comfortable if we made some decisions around our facilities, where we're going to, you know, let's work that issue, get a better understanding of what we really need the land for. And then we make decisions about, okay, here's our inventory of land. What do we want to do with it? I feel like we have to work through some of these facilities issues first before we get a good handle on swapping.
What happens in the situation of a swap? So if somebody had a piece of land in town, they wanted to swap us, would it still have to go through some kind of process?
Yes.
Town, I mean, besides town meeting, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there, Jeff, I assume you're here for this? I would like to hear from you.
Okay, my name is Jeff Bordenman Turner. I live on School Street. I'm a member of the Conservation Commission, but I'm not here as a representative of Conservation Commission tonight. I have a number of questions. When was the last time that the town sold land to a private party? Sold it, not swapped it, sold it?
I don't know. Certainly not much on here.
Anybody on the board aware of that?
The Old Story High School.
Was sold?
Oh, I don't know whether we took the school down first or the land.
But the land's in private hands now.
The land is in private.
Okay, and that was seventy years ago?
Oh, easy.
You can go there, Jim.
It'd be tough.
Don't go there, brother.
I'm glad, I'm glad you shared, Madam Chair, because
She knows, she just wasn't admitting.
I'm going to research that.
Yeah.
From the tenor of the conversation so far, my second question may be less relevant. But has this parcel or any other parcel in the Western Woods been declared surplus, which would be a condition for selling it?
No.
And given that the parcel has no known right-of-way access, is there any other private entity which would be able to participate in competitive bidding as required by law? What Mr. Miller didn't say is that there are three, he said that there are three pieces of conservation land owned by Manchester Essex Conservation Trust that surround the property. And the other abutter is Mr. Miller. It's unlikely that Mr. Miller is going to sell access to that property to anyone. That does not allow for a competitive bidding process and the price that you were talking about trying to get, Mr. Miller. I asked Greg this question about a week ago, whether there is any town policy or procedure presently for the disposal of land other than the state procedures. The state of Massachusetts doesn't allow the town to sell land. The state of Massachusetts has to approve through the legislature any sale of town land.
Is that true, Greg?
That's my understanding.
If it's unrestricted land. Certainly if it's restricted land, that is true. But if it's unrestricted, I'm not aware of it.
Yeah, because I know somebody who just went through this in town with restricted land, but I've never heard it the other way around.
But you've never heard of anybody selling, the town selling to any private party other than, in Ann's recollection, the Story High School?
I mean, here, but I'm sure it's happened in other towns in Massachusetts.
Okay.
Yeah, I would suspect, you know.
Let's pass on whether we need to go to the legislature and continue, please.
My understanding from past conversations with this board within other boards in the town is that the intent of the land in the Western Woods is to preserve it to the greatest degree possible. And my concern is selling land to private parties takes it out of the town's hands. We lose all control over the disposition of the land. And what portion of the land gets put into conservation once the private party owns it? And what portion of the land is retained privately? And whether it's built on or not is outside of control of the town other than through the boards who would have control over, such as the Conservation Commission. So I'm not sure. It seems like there's a lot of ducks that need to be researched here. Again, to have an understanding about how this, or why this kind of sale should go through.
Is there anyone online?
I don't see your hands up. Steve Gay, has his hand up?
Mr. Gay?
Thank you, Madam Chair and select members. I think selling this land is a terrible idea. But I think you'd come to that conclusion soon enough if you put any study to it. And of course, we have discussed it in con con, speaking as an individual, not as chair nor as co-chair of the Open Space and Recreation Committee. But it's land that has been wooded since forever. Is surrounded by conservation, has no significant property value and no, therefore no revenue value to the town. And no value to any private party except Mr. Miller and his family. And I should say, I have a lot of respect for his family. His sister was my neighbor for decades in Beverly Farms. But despite that, I cannot see any possible argument for converting land that anybody who steps on would realize is most valuable is conservation, as part of the Western Woods, as part of the overall, at least implicit, program, as part of the master plan from two thousand nineteen that called for that land to be assessed and see if there are uses that the town could include, which I don't think has ever been done. Anyway, that's, that's all I have to say. I don't think, I think this all goes on.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
A quick comment. So again, I completely respect all the opinions here. And I completely understand people's perspectives on this. I would be thrilled to see that property go into conservation. So I'm not I would be thrilled to see that property go into conservation, so I'm not, I would not be opposed to that at all. I think part of this was maybe some concern that the town, somebody might do something other than my family obtaining it or going to conservation. So I'll just leave it at that. This has been very informative, and I hope it's been informative to other members of the committee and the participants here. And I've learned a lot, and if the, the result, the, the conclusion is that the sale of this to a private individual is really not a good idea, not advisable for the town, not good for the town, that's a great conclusion. And I, next would be, I'd love to see this go into conservation or remain the way it is for as long as we can. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we've heard we have no desire to put it into conservation immediately, but we have no desire to put it anywhere else either.
We do.
I think we should not put this on our action list, but should just say, should conditions change, we will hear about it again. But for the time being, I think we're not interested in pursuing a sale of that.
Yeah, I'll just make the observation that part of this was, is that, I guess Debbie found a town policy of Ipswich for the disposition of public land. Now, I'm interested, I'm not interested in putting another policy along those lines, 'cause I never expect us having to do that.
Yeah, I, I-
But I, I read it, seemed a little short.
It just, I, I also read it, and, and I think, given the frequency with which this sort of thing comes up, once every 70 years, perhaps rather than developing a policy that everyone will forget about, we should just take it up when it comes up.
Yeah.
Can I make one other comment?
Yes, of course.
It was mentioned that in the development and changes to Newport Park, and I'm aware of this, the land behind, I think it's the Dane Building, the building next to it, might be used, which is now designated as conservation land, and that there would need to be a swap. And Brian, you mentioned having a land bank. Has there been any proposal from the Board, the Select Board, to identify parcels that would be prioritized for conservation if such a land swap were necessary?
I think we're very preliminary in these discussions. I, I've brought it up a couple of times, but it's just been a passive. They don't have a, uh-
I, I think the answer to your question is, is no, and that's-
Do we have a record of what, other than the GIS map, of what property the town owns?
Yes. I think the last open space plan listed all those properties.
I think the Affordable Housing Trust had looked through that whole list, within the-
Yeah, I found, uh, it was in a report. This is in fact the map of the land, and all the yellow spots are owned by the town.
But so that's the inventory.
We do have an inventory.
You have an inventory, but not a strategy around how to use the, how to disposition the land. That's what's missing, is you have the inventory, which is a great start, but we have, no one's made any decisions about what to do about.
No, that's correct.
And that, that would be-
This, this discussion just came up, at least started to percolate with me when the Affordable Housing Trust came to us and started discussing their options and some of the constraints with Newport Park. And that's how that, that's where my mind started to go.
What organization or? Okay, my, my first reaction is, let's not take on a problem before we have it. We, we know what the properties are. They may not be completely accurate, but when we have a case where we need property, we, we have a place to start, rather than assigning somebody the task of trying to figure out.
Well, so I agree with that. However, I do think the Affordable Housing Trust, or the Manchester Housing Trust, has a need, right? They, they've said land is the issue. Is that, can they take it upon themselves to work with Concom, or maybe that's not the right venue, but-
Open source.
Open source, open space, excuse me, open space committee, and work that issue amongst themselves. I'm not sure why we would need to get involved at all until the end stage, but I see no reason why two boards can't work together outside of this venue and look for some creative solutions.
Because if that becomes a little, with that information that they have in hand, when they sit down, where they put on RFP, uh, okay, but yes, to Kathy's point, we don't have to get-
We don't have to get in the middle of it.
No, we don't, and I think, well, Chuck sent around the facilities plan report of a year or so ago, and I remember them delivering that to us. And early on, they said, we looked at everything the town owned, and I don't know how much detail they went into, but that's a starting point, because they had to go down the list and say, where can you put, you know, where is access? Where you might be able to-
So that's a good point. They looked at it from where could we put facilities? But no one has really looked at it from a, what could we swap standpoint? That's what I think the, the action-
I'm not sure, I could be, I'm, I'm telling right now, I'm not sure. Sweeney Park, the expansion of Sweeney Park, the, uh, right through the softball fields. There was discussion about expanding that, but I don't know if it was wetlands or conservation land that was running that-
Probably, yeah. A lot of that was back there.
Say it was just-
Conservation Commission has already been on our side.
Yeah, say it was just conservation land, then that becomes an opportunity to expand the playing fields. If it wasn't, if there wasn't the wetlands issue, it was just conservation. So I'd just like to have some opportunities.
I, I think we're not, by, by, by putting this aside at the moment, suggesting that-
Absolutely.
Two committees get together and, and-
Do good things.
Do good, yeah. Look, look for land to swap. Great. I think we ought to stop talking about it.
Yes.
I agree. Well, I wanna thank Mr. Miller for initiating the conversation, 'cause I think the result may not have been what you had desired or intended, but we wound up having a very substantive discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I think you may be reasonably assured that this, that land is not going to be turned into-
You'll be able to look at that wall for a long time.
It's on the DPW list.
Just checking it out, it's pretty cool. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay.
I noticed that Jeff didn't put any times next to anything these days.
Smart lady.
On the, on the, um, the town has been a figure screening committee. And Greg, I think you-
So typically, the hiring process often consists of going forward with the recruiter. Typically, that recruiter then assemble, you know, hopefully, you know, a couple dozen names, and then riddle that down to maybe six to eight, that a preliminary screening committee then would review. And that preliminary screening committee can do that confidentially, which is helpful to the candidates. People are, can be a little gun shy to put their name in if they know that from the get-go, their name is public. And it just makes it difficult, where they are continuing their current work, if they, you know, before they know if they're a finalist or not. So it's helpful to have a preliminary screening committee to do that work with the recruiter, and then that committee then would recommend, say, three finalists for you. And then you would, again, working with the recruiting consultant, go through a process of vetting those three finalists and making a decision. So it, it, it's helpful to solicit names for those who might be interested in serving on such a committee. Five or seven members would be a typical size, consisting of some committee members, perhaps. Maybe a citizen or two at large. You can debate, having a current staff member, I think that is sometimes helpful. But some people sometimes are uncomfortable with that, so that's something to discuss.
So when John and I met with you and the recruiting firm, where I think we left the conversation was, we talked about possible members they recommended, whereas someone from FinCom, someone from the planning board, someone representing the schools. We talked about a former Select Board member who has already gone through this process, and at-large resident. So we could limit it to five, or we could expand it to more. But my recollection is when we discussed staff people participating on the screening. That was frowned upon, especially if there could be an internal candidate, number one. And number two, they're going to go through an interview process to interview all of Greg's direct reports, and that's how they would get feedback from the staff in the process. And, and we, we did have staff people on the screening, or I should say, the interviewing committee for the, for Jake McNeely's role, the fire chief, and that was very uncomfortable. I would just say that. I, I really feel strongly-
Oh, and the fire chiefs, yeah.
I, I think that was very uncom- and you would, yeah, very uncomfortable. I really would not recommend having Greg's staff on the screening committee. Is that, did I capture everything, John?
I think you ca- you captured the key issues there. I didn't remember all the staff folks, but I didn't, I mean, all of the committee folks, but I do know that staff was not a popular entry.
An alternative process I've gone through personally is, sometimes the recruiter will have a roundtable, an hour with staff, to have that-
Oh, to collect information there.
Yeah, just to have a conversation, and then people give some feedback based on that roundtable conversation.
Has your experience been seven people or five people, or you're kind of agnostic as to whether what the count is?
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't know if I'd go higher than seven.
Oh, no, I wouldn't. I'm just kinda wavering between five and seven.
Seven's workable.
Yeah.
So I, I listed up five that we had discussed. And the question would be, who were the other two that you would add? Would you add more at-large residents, or would you add someone from a different committee, like library trustees or Board of Health or Concom? I don't know.
But yeah, FinCom, Planning Board, School-
FinCom, Planning Board, School, and then the former Select Board-
Former Select Board and at-large.
And at-large, that's five.
Maybe do two at-large.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that, you know, if you go, if you go to seven, you can always pick up, say, another Select Board person who might serve as the, at the at-large. I'm just looking at the Select Board in the past, and there are a lot of people with a lot of experience.
Yeah, definitely.
Over the past, say, 20 years. And, yeah, I'm trying to think-
So maybe two past Select Board and-
Two at-large.
I would, I would put in the library instead of-
Oh, library.
I'm kind of, you know-
Yeah, it's, it's a part of a town and not quite part of a town, and, oh, okay.
No, I'm just, okay, no, I'm just, uh, I'm, they have budgeting, yeah, I suppose.
Yeah.
I'm looking at, like, uh, and I'm just discounting both the library, and I apologize. But, you know, I, I fully onboard with the FinCom, Planning Board, yeah.
Just look after all the committees, the Board of Health, there's Concom.
I think the FinCom Planning Board, I mean, that's my-
Those are the big ones. The school, you know, it's-
That's, well, they're school.
Those are the, those are the three, I think that-
And then go three, and then if you do, uh, two past Select Board members is five. And then if you wanna add-
At-large residents.
Two at-large residents.
Yeah.
And then, when you written, you send out a letter of, you know, they have to, a letter of interest.
So for the, for the, for the three boards committees, you ask them to pick someone-
Pick somebody themselves.
Yeah.
And then you would, uh, yeah, that large, you would put out a general solicitation, as well as reach out to the general solicitation to all past Select Board members who might be interested.
Yeah, who makes this select, does this board select those?
Yeah, we would do that. So we would pick the two former Select Board members and the two at-large residents.
Okay, I think you're making a motion.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember all the stuff that's going on.
But we include members of the planning board-
Planning Board, Finance Committee, Schools.
To be selected by their own committees, plus two former Select Board members who've gone through the process.
Selected by?
And two at-large members to be selected by the Select Board. Those latter positions to be advertised.
Right, that's correct. Those are, those are, those are advertised, and, and so the last four positions would be determined by us.
Yes.
What she said.
Are you seconding his?
I second his, second whatever.
Okay.
On top of that, Jeff.
Got it.
Is there further discussion? John?
Yes.
Ann says yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Excellent, yeah.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. One got in less than an hour, how about that? Review of the special town meeting article.
So this was, really, can be quick. We just wanted to review the four, four articles, make sure people are comfortable with what they are about. And so who's, who's on deck, we speak to each one. So number one, Article One is the request to authorize $250,000 from Community Preservation Funds to contribute to the so-called denormity land conservation project.
Yeah, that was to be moved by Steve Gay.
Right.
Does he know that?
Oh, we'll confirm, but yes, I believe he's been talking to Alan about that already.
And, yeah, and my notes are, I'm seconding that, I guess?
Yes.
Okay.
So Article Two then is the proposal to simplify the general bylaw that addresses stormwater management and replace it, as I say, with a simpler, shorter version, and putting the, the complex and technical details to the DPW to formulate the regulations, which are keeping with state and federal requirements. They, they dictate a lot here when it's needed. So those regulations would be developed by DPW, but approved by you after a public hearing. So it takes it, takes away from the burden of voters at town meeting having to always update a pretty complex set of regulations. And so the substitute regulations, it'll certainly spell out all the parameters and, and the scope of those regulations, that they must follow the state and federal guidelines at a minimum. Obviously, they can go further than that, but they can't go any lower, or they can't be less restrictive than what those requirements would, would have us have. And as I say, that would then be able to be developed by DPW, updated regularly, and then have you approve them at a, at a public hearing, so that people still have that input, and we just don't have to go to town meeting every time with a 25-page or so set of regulations. So that is Article Two.
Can I believe I'm moving now?
Uh, you are, and Jeff is second.
That's a good step up.
He's sounding like an elf.
He's backing.
And I'm gonna have, actually, I'm gonna have to sit down with Chuck.
Yeah.
Even better, I'll just have AI do it, I don't know.
Yeah, certainly Chuck can answer the technical questions.
I'll talk to Rudy.
That's article two. And then article three is the past fiscal year bill that needs voter approval. So it's just shy of $9,900. And these are for past consulting services related to the ZBA's review of the proposed 40B. Bill that fell through the cracks, and so we need to go through this process. Of course, we don't have too many of these.
Ninety percent?
We do have this one.
Ninety percent, you said, was for this?
Oh, a nine-tenths vote, yes. Yes, it requires a nine-tenths vote. Oddity of state law. And then finally, we have article four, which is the MBTA 3A zoning. And there's ample discussions on that. There'll be another here, a public forum on the topic this coming Thursday at 7:00. That'll be the last, the last formal presentation. I think there's a couple of other meetings. I think there's a Rotary presentation the following week. It might be.
7:30 in the morning.
Yeah, 7:30 in the morning.
There's breakfast. There's breakfast.
Brian gave the show. That's your.
Actually, I'm not a member of the Rotary.
Good call as a candidate.
Yeah, I get tired of being chased for money for services I rendered. I've been chased by many creditors for services I've accepted, and never been chased to pay my dues for services I rendered.
So those are the four articles. Town meeting is the 18th of November, so 6:30 at the middle high school. We'll be gathering in the gymnasium. If necessary, overflow would be into the auditorium, hoping that we can all fit in the gym. I think we will. But if need be, we do have the capability of spilling over into the auditorium and having simulcast basically between the two. So we encourage people to arrive early. We do expect a pretty good crowd. Takes a little time.
Opening at 5:30.
Opening up at 5:30. Get your seat, get your popcorn, relax before.
Yourself would be a good one to have. Is there anything else we need to do about that?
No, I don't believe so. There'll be a pre-town meeting session on Saturday.
Saturday before.
The 16th.
We're from Saturday.
Yeah, we're from Saturday, the 16th, 9:00. It'll be by Zoom. I think he's planning to do it 100% virtual. And again, that's just to go over sort of logistics, who's, who's on first for each one, that type of thing.
Why 26 budget?
So 26 budget process, you've had some discussion on capital. Staff are working on their operating budgets. We'll have those ready to present to you at your second meeting in December, December 16. If you have some thoughts on the presentation and how you would like to improve upon what has been presented in the past, I would welcome those comments. Don't have to do it tonight, but just let me know what you would find helpful. And are there, again, I keep asking, are there particular areas of concern or areas of interest that you want to have a deeper dive? That you think would be valuable? Again, all ears for that. We, as I say, we've had some conversations about the capital and facilities planning in particular. Chuck was able to provide you some of those past reports. So I don't know if you have some thoughts on what you would like to do as sort of a next step for, for that process?
I'd be interested in another alternative of financing that doesn't have such big chunks of cash.
Yeah, so we talked about that at the last finance committee meeting.
Bond, what's a band again? Bond?
Bond anticipation notes.
Bond anticipation note?
Yeah, bond anticipation notes.
I couldn't remember what the A was for.
So, so you can do bands, these bond anticipation notes. You're only paying interest only, you're not paying any principal, so you can lessen the blow. You can sort of feather it out a little bit. Doing it that way, and we can take a harder look at when we need the full amount of the bond and monies. So Andrew and Chuck and I will sit down to look at some options to lessen that hit and spread out the pain a little bit.
I'm just wondering, and I don't, I don't know how this works, but if a lender says, okay, I'll give you $10 million, is there a window of time where you can say, I'll take $2 million now, oh, in 18 months, I'll take five? Or do they have to have certain times because they have to make plan for their cash results? In other words, we put together a budget, but frankly, we're not sure when all of these things are gonna hit.
Right, so you can, you can do, you can say, no, I just need $2 million now, and in two years from now, I'm gonna need another $3 million, and then.
If it's $10 million, I need $2 million. I don't get charged for the other age.
Correct.
Until I take.
I, I think the conversation we had at FinCom is really separate, which makes a lot of sense. Separating out the authorization of the project from the authorization of the financing. Okay, two separate decisions, and separating those will help us be a lot more flexible.
So we'll work on more details on the.
Right.
That information should be there.
I have a question about the interest rates. Are they fixed, or how does that work?
So yes, when we issue bonds, we get a fixed rate for that bond. And it may, we'll know what the rate is each year. The rate may vary a little bit.
From year to year?
But we, we will know that when we sign the note. It's not a variable rate that floats.
Each, each time we write a portion of that money, we'll know what that portion of money's gonna cost.
Correct.
But we can't refinance that if the rate goes down?
There are callable bonds, yes. And so if you have a callable bond, then you can, you can basically replace it with a less expensive bond.
Okay.
So that is an option. We, you've done that a few times.
The school has done that a lot.
School has done that to, to the advantage of everyone.
Yeah.
Well, that means your initial rate might be a couple of tenths higher or something, because you have to pay for that privilege for something that's callable.
Yeah.
Okay.
But typically, well, at least in the school case, you couldn't call it immediately. You couldn't call it, you have to wait five or six years.
Ooh, that's a long time.
Well.
Sometimes 10 years. I mean, it's just, it all depends.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, these are typically 30-year bonds, so.
Oh, yeah, so on the whole scale of things, it's.
15 or 30 typically, what we're doing.
The bands, in my experience on school projects, is they have been much lower interest than we would expect for the final bond.
Typically, yeah.
Is there a shorter window of time?
It's, yeah, it's, it's only a couple of years.
So I guess only on the feedback initially right now, I have, I really would like us, we spend a lot of time talking about two and a half, what fits into the two and a half, I don't care. Two and a half is a means of determining how you get a budget approved. What I'd like us to make sure we understand is what were our expenses, you know, the past, you know, let's just go back three years. And how much did the budget increase over that period of time, you know? And I also think we need a, a window of how much the tax bills, you know, went up over a period of time, so including your, your bonds, right? I'd like us to make sure we're looking at the numbers in terms of the absolutes, as opposed to what we squeezed into two and a half, because Prop 2.5 includes increasing, you know, the threshold based on property values, which have, you know, skyrocketed. So it's, it's not, it's, we're, like, you know, like last year, we, we we increased the operational budget by, what, 7% or something like that? I'm sensitive to the fact we probably shouldn't be doing that every year. So I just want to make sure we're looking at the, the budgets, you know, operational and including, you know, the debt, but before we have real discussions around what fits into the two and a half boundaries. One other thing, I'm sorry, one other thing came up, just in, just some ancillary thing. When people have been approaching me over the past, you know, few weeks, just asking about the, the MBTA zoning and how the grants figure into that. I, I really feel, I've heard this from almost everybody, that people are not understanding the discussion we're having on the facilities planning that we're doing with, you know, the finance committee. I feel like that there is a large gap of knowledge. I, I feel like the residents don't understand we're trying to work through that long-term financial planning and, and will need grants for that. It feels like just a black hole of communication or information. I just have noticed that in the past couple of weeks, because when people ask me about the MBTA zoning and they're saying, well, what grants are we gonna lose? They, they keep saying, well, we don't, we don't need that many grants. It's like they just don't understand we're talking about some significant future investments in facilities. It's like, it's just not registering with people, so.
I think that was covered pretty good at the last, at the hearing.
I heard it still from someone today. You know, it's just, it's coming up constantly, so I feel like we're.
Because they're getting battered from the, from another group saying that the grants are insignificant.
No, it, this was, this was a discussion I had on a completely different topic, and the person just, I, I consider the person a well-informed resident, and they really didn't, I said, you know, we could have, you know, $100 million worth of facilities expensive, expenses in the next 20 years, and they were, what? What are you talking about?
I can see that.
You know, and so.
We haven't.
We haven't talked about it outside.
Put it out on the street, to give great detail.
Yeah, and, and so that absence of understanding, I think, is contributing to people not understanding why the severity of the grant, the decision. I just feel it's a big gap.
Well, maybe you just gave me my article for tomorrow.
There you go, okay.
I can certainly spend a little time.
The other, the other issue here, what people are failing is that, I've read, and I'm spending a lot of time on social media. Well, we don't need the money, you know, just with tax, you know, taxpayers, we can use tax income from this. But what that does is that's gonna raise up, it's gonna, the adverse effect of that is as property taxes go up, it becomes even less affordable to this town. Not only, the upside to the town right now is that, yeah, our property values might be high, but our tax rate is low. But you add, if you end up with a, an Essex tax rate, okay, which is highly possible, all right? Which basically, I think they're probably paying double of what an average homeowner is paying here. That just lends, becomes, the town's even more unaffordable. So we've got, we've got to, you know, get that word out too. The idea of just, let us raise our taxes. I've heard a couple of people, this is even before MBTA zoning. One guy was complaining about, Monday after a nice warm weekend, and Reed Park was full of trash. All right, well, you know, they gotta get out there. Well, I, we can't, why don't we have someone cleaning out on, on Sundays? It's a budget item. I'd be willing to pay more taxes to have it cleaned up. Like I said, you might be, but someone else might not be.
Sarah Melish, this is her.
Yes, please, sir. Yeah, I was gonna say that I plan to speak at the town meeting with respect to the, the financial analysis. I'm also working on a summary of it to just give the bottom line. And I'm gonna hone on, hone into why we don't feel it'll increase the school expenses and to hone in on the grants and the long-term capital needs. So I hope that, and I'll do that in the summary also, soon.
I don't know if this is in the same, this is appropriate for this discussion. When is the, when were we planning on raising the rotunda? This coming season or?
Yes, this coming season. I, I don't know if it'll get done. I don't know if we'll be able to get it done in the, in the springtime for the summer, or do we wait until the fall?
Okay, but it's the next 20, 12 months?
Yes, during 25.
Okay, and that, that grant money could conceivably go away.
Right, so that's one of the funding mechanisms that are subject to.
You know, I'm talking with Chuck and Vion, we're, you know, the, the reality here is the rotunda could very easily be condemned this year.
Well, we could lose it this winter. We were lucky not to lose it last winter.
Talking about the charm and character of the community.
Yeah, I think that's really important. I think we, we just need to really connect these dots very tightly. I know we started with a budget conversation, but this is about the budget and the potential impact on the budget and.
When I talk to people all the time.
And the connections.
Well, that's one of the first things I start with is the rotunda. Because that's gonna be off the table immediately.
They understand that the most. You can't start with sawmill brook.
Right.
No, there was a bridge there.
You wanna go with something you can sell, you know?
Yeah, because if not, it's a major sale. We're gonna have some serious big sales.
There are people out there too that just do not wanna believe the grant situation is written, too. I see that, too.
Well, I was reading today, there's no grants are guaranteed. Well, guess what? I can tell you, I can guarantee you what's not going. I can't guarantee you people aren't going to build under the, with the new zoning. But I can guarantee you what we will lose. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna govern with, you know, with subjective or rather with just guessing, the what-ifs. This, this is real. And again, to your point, we rely heavily on grants to balance our budget.
So they, they would take back money unless the check's written. Just because it's granted, that's, that's no solace in that.
Correct.
If the, if the check has been written, it's too late. The money's gone from the bank. But if it's been granted, but you haven't spent it yet.
Correct.
I, I think that, what they just mentioned, that would be great to go in your article. Here's, here's some things that are on the table right now that we would lose and would have to increase our budget by X in order to.
You got them right now, because there are people that make distinctions between, well, this is what we've applied for. Well, people apply for a lot of stuff. But we've got stuff that we have an award.
Yes, I don't, I'll have to double check. I don't think anything that's in the works is subject to rescission. Double check.
But we haven't started.
Right.
Definitely want to double check.
I mean, the, the Mass Works grant. I guess I shouldn't say that.
In other words, the money that's.
We have the contract, but we don't have all of that money in hand.
This is the money that's going out to CST?
For the pipes.
For the pipes. We've spent some of that.
Yeah, but we have not spent all of it. We're in the process of.
Okay, that's an interesting topic. You could say all of a sudden.
The sewer isn't gonna get done until spring, so.
So they, they, they could pull that back.
Well, it doesn't matter. The CST ought to spend it. I'll pay for it.
Well.
But if, if that's true, then I think we owe it to the residents to be very plain.
They should know.
So we're, we're in the middle of a dredging grant, $200,000, just over $200,000. But again, we haven't spent all that money. That's in process. And that, again, that technically is, is.
I don't. Send me by my turner, gather a list for the.
Yeah.
I think her list is confusing.
So her list is all, all the grants we received in 2024, two of, two of which were definitely on the state law. And then she has projections for '25. The two big ones there, the rotunda and the dredging are the two big ones. More than four.
I, I think when it comes to the authoritative source, that would be FinCom though, right? For residents to.
FinCom, let's show them.
So.
The finances, what I'm talking about, the finances.
The FinCom, does it apply for grants?
No, no, I just didn't know, just, we were talking budgets, so. No, no, I just didn't know, just, we were talking budgets, so.
Right, so, but again, if, if you look at the past 10 years, grand total is a little north of 20 million. The, the total that is subject to the guidelines plus the law is just north of 8 million. The grants that were subject to just what was in the law is just over 6 million. So those are, I don't mean to give you too many numbers, but.
I'm already lost. But can we come up with like a percentage of saying 5% or 10% of our, of our annual expenditures is grant money?
Let's operate.
I think when it comes to the finances, worrying about what has been in the past is not.
Well, demonstrates the music.
Well, not terribly beneficial though, because of our financial projections moving forward are significantly different than the past. So I would rather, because I, and I think it's a more compelling story. I just, I started this conversation because I really feel the residents are unfamiliar.
With what's ahead.
That what's, what's ahead, specifically those big facilities and infrastructure investments.
No, I agree with that.
They, they're not aware and that's my concern.
Yeah, yeah, we just haven't spent much time talking about that publicly.
Sorry.
Yeah, I think it'd be great if your next article had.
I don't want to do it tomorrow.
You're welcome.
Next subject, do we name the budgets?
Yeah, does this Chris hanging around from that time?
Oh. I think not hanging around. Um, the Chris Monkholm was appointed of, as a interim.
I think fill out a term.
Fill out a term. And needed to be reappointed.
So this is just administrative?
Housekeeping?
Yeah.
Housekeeping. I hope she is, hasn't been waiting. Good.
So do you like a motion?
Yes.
I think that's good. I make a motion to appoint Chris Monkholm, excuse me, the Couth's Council for a term to expire on June 30th, 2025.
Second. Further discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
John, yes.
Right, liaison updates. I have a couple. I think at our last meeting, I mentioned that the Board of Health was having a public forum. They did approve a significant change on the restriction for tobacco purchases in Manchester. No person, firm, corporation, establishment, or agency shall sell tobacco or nicotine products to anyone born on or after January 1, 2004. And that will take effect in 2025. So basically, there, it's not about how old you are, it's about when you are born. And other towns have adopted this same restriction. So basically, they're trying to phase out the usage of tobacco and nicotine for generations. Phrasing is generational restriction, whatever. I expressed, before they voted, I expressed concern because the vast majority of people on the call were not from Manchester. They were not residents. They were outsiders. Special interest groups promoting this. But if I understand the Board of Health's perspective, they felt that because the residents did not attend the meeting, they were not concerned, so they felt comfortable approving the restriction. So. They approved it. Did I misstate anything, Greg? Because I know you were on the call. So, um, about a dozen special people there, special interest groups from all of them.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
On a vendetta.
I think I got two emails from people opposed to that, also from other towns.
Yeah. My concern is this was implemented in, I, I, I mean, they appropriately posted the meeting about whether or not people didn't understand what was really going to happen or they truly just don't, don't think it affects them. But the, the only, you know, the businesses who do sell the tobacco products were on the call. Made their case and that wasn't enough, anyway.
Cambridge by the sea.
Or Brookline by the sea, Brookline by the sea.
They've already.
So that doesn't have to go through us to implement?
Board of Health is an independent board.
Yeah. They're independent of us.
Our citizen petition can overturn that?
Yes.
And people.
But if no one's aware, so I just bring it up because I felt, yeah, I, I just, anyway.
When they're implementing.
I believe that, was it April 1st?
Or Jan?
Yeah.
I'm wondering if we had a citizens petition, it would have to go to a town meeting, I assume. And it'd be nice if people knew. But if they implemented on April 1st, it's too late.
Well, it can always be rescinded.
It's too late to rescind it at the annual town meeting.
Last time, I'm hearing that you can rescind.
You can rescind it after it's in effect.
What, people won't be aware of it until it happens.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Until someone goes to buy a pair of, some smokes at the corner store and they're denied, that's when people might wake up.
It's going to be an expectation process on this.
But it starts with 2004, so we're, we're.
Yeah, what, what is the age of tobacco purchase? 21?
21.
So it's not affecting anybody, really, for the first year, so.
It could take a year for people to be affected.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That was.
So we're not.
Trying to say that.
But you know, someone new moves into town and in their old town, they could buy smokes and in their new town, they can't buy smokes.
People who use the buying, smoking, beer are going to go somewhere else and get it.
Right, I mean, so anyway, I just wanted to bring that up.
Interest has no problems keeping the businesses.
Exactly. All right, so I think that was, the only other thing I want to mention regarding liaison is on FinCom. Infincom meeting, we did review the Q1 financials. I think the only anomaly they found was the police overtime. So that there was a discussion around when they're, and that was due to the July 4th event. So there was some discussion about, well, we have these really big events, maybe we need to budget them a little bit differently so that we're not skewing the, the police operational, you know, budget data. So that, I think that's a good.
I've been trying to submit, he's, he's chused through a lot of his overtime budget just on the 4th of July.
Well, I mean, they can put it under the July 4th committee. That's what they discussed, which I think personally is more appropriate. But they'll, they'll, you know, work through that. And then they reviewed the harbor launch financials. I think that was well-received. And then they did start discussing financial approaches for the DPW building, including like you suggested, you know, John, can we advance the design options, you know, bite off a little piece of the elephant, maybe, you know, a toe or two? And then figure out what we're going to do.
Just the garage door.
Exactly. And so they started those discussions. That was it.
I got nothing. Right now. Basketball style.
Forever. Well, Plan Board had their MBTA hearing. I'm sure you don't want to hear more about that. And hybrid advisory meets tomorrow, Wednesday.
I'm sorry, I knew you said something and I, I grasped onto it and lost it. Um, the finance committee may be pleased with the launch revenues. But I'm a little concerned because after you added in the $10,000 for insurance, they broke even with about $5,000 and that's awfully close.
Yeah, I mean, there wasn't any big discussion, you know, on the harbor launch, but I think Bion still has an action to come back to us.
He does.
Well, the regulations include the exact fees. And, and perhaps we could add a note to them that there's concern that, that $5,000 is a fairly close margin.
I mean, it's fairly close and I get what you're saying, but I mean, for first year, not lose money, I think is good.
But if we go back to the original plan, we had kind of planned to lose like 10%, I think, the first year. And, and so I, I do think Anne's bringing up a good point though. Some of what was in the business plan should be codified in the, in the regulations. For example, what we discussed about their budgeting for their fees has to be projected to cover all of the operational costs. You know, so some of that language that's in the business plan should really be.
They're, yeah.
Codified.
They're, they're not touching their capital.
No, whatever the surplus is, I get just dumped toward that.
The other thing that we have to take into consideration was a great summer.
It was beautiful weather.
Yes.
We, we throw in a couple of bad weekends or a bad month.
Well, it was the transmission. It was the transmission that was unexpected.
True.
That was, but you know, those things happen and we were blessed with a good summer.
So we had a summer to absorb that.
We were able to absorb it.
The thing is, there was a fair amount of, of non-prepaid traffic that made it work. So maybe.
As the word gets out.
They should consider the annual fee, you know, 25 bucks.
Right, right. Yeah.
Because that's guaranteed regardless of the weather.
Right.
Exactly, yeah. That, that annual fee has, the season pass is what he called it. That has to be projected to cover all of the operational costs.
Yeah, I think there's definitely some.
That's gravy.
You can spend $100,000 for a morgue and you can spend $25,000 for a ride. Ride to it.
Sorry, so, anything further?
At some point, I might have an Essex tech update because there's some things going on around admissions and legislature, but I don't want to get too far into it because I have a meeting next week up there and I'm hoping to have some more information. That's kind of an ongoing thing. It's been going on for like 10 years, but all of a sudden it's picking up speed, so when I know more.
Is this by the reason, right?
Yeah.
Who they select and.
Just was talking to Lisa Martinez, she did a great mole.
Yeah, I just talked to her the other night.
She was talking about how the state is really.
Well, now they're starting to pull the grant money situation, you know, this is their.
Using.
Card they play now.
Seems like the government is now using grant money to take away, if you don't do what we're going to do.
The carrot and the stick, it's always worked.
But it's going to hurt, I'm going to be honest with you. If it goes to a lottery, it's going to hurt us here. It's going to hurt the small town. So. But we'll talk about it more.
Are they running out of space?
Oh, they've been out of space since day one.
Subscribe.
Yeah. But, yeah, we can dive into it more once.
So that might stop quarter after.
Yeah, exactly. So, anyway. That's it for me.
Greg, I guess I might ask, seniors have asked, purchase and sale for the senior center? You heard anything from the attorneys?
Trying to set up a meeting for the two attorneys to meet. That's the next step, so we're getting, getting closer with, with the guys.
They did on the weekly.
Yeah, the goal is to suddenly close before the end of the year.
That, that in particular, so, okay, all right, well, that's, that's, that's good to hear. BPW, things are going along, I guess, okay, we heard about the Ocean Street. The Flag Project is in process. And I did speak with Nate about that today. And I think he's got a flag pole lined up. He, he thinks he will have everything more or less organized, maybe done by the end of the year. I don't know. He's going to try and shoot before, try for before they put the, they light up the tree. I don't think that's going to happen. But he could start that afterward. The one thing he doesn't want to do, and I agree, is you don't want to have a construction zone in that corner when we light the tree. So I think he's automatically looking to the day after and he had to line up a flagpole and some other things, orders, orders some things.
Is it something they can do during the winter?
I was going to say, all the grounds are frozen.
Well, I don't think.
I would, if you can.
But yeah, you know, any time before, before the end of the year, I think it's okay. It doesn't get super cold. Once you get into January, it's, that's wild. We'll see.
I mean, they can do a better planting, a better landscaping around. But that's, hey, you know, they know better than I do.
Okay. He did say it's going to be about a 25-foot pole, so it's not going to be as big as he needed to be. The key issue with the, the flags and the American flag is the American flag has to be the highest. I don't care what pole it's on. It just has to be the highest. So it may be that the honor roll flagpole will be a little bit higher, even though it sits a little bit lower because the.
Why is he put it into a 25-foot pole?
Well, he can have different choices, but the smaller the pole, the easier it is to put in the pole.
There's some concern, he was talking to a few landscape architect types who felt that a very large pole that close to the street.
Would be overpowering.
Would be overpowering.
Yeah.
A little concerned about that.
Interesting to see.
Okay.
Some feedback from.
Yeah, that was, yes, from Laura. I think I heard that. Different conversations, same topic.
Right.
That's it.
MBTA zoning group is working on putting together a packet for a meeting. And racing for another forum here. The intention of taking out the tables and making it friendlier and more approachable. Maybe school committee. Probably about going to, well, we really need three budgets. Minimal maintenance, desirable. Be anything else.
That just reminded me that the first series is tentatively set to meet with Essex Finance. It's the Wednesday, 20, remember, 18, 19, 20? Week the 20th, 20th, 21st, I'm forgetting if it was Wednesday or Thursday. I can let you know.
18th is Monday.
So, so we'll let you, keep you posted on that.
Here or there?
I think here. Sarah, Sarah's going to form that up with, with counterpart.
Move that the board approve the meeting minutes of October 21st, 2024.
Okay.
Question? John?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kevin, legislators?
All right, just a couple of things. One, we have another round with some of the Harvard researchers this coming Friday. And the focus this time around is on financial impacts, climate change in terms of how it might affect municipal operations, how do you recover? So two very interesting persons, this Percy Keenan is quoted all the time in the New York Times and various channels and media channels as, he's served on a lot of presidential commissions on financial impacts of storms, et cetera. Very interesting gentleman. And Rachel Meltzer has done a lot of work on recovery post, post disasters. And what she has observed helps towns to recover more quickly than what they have done ahead of time to help them recover more quickly. So if you have time, it's 2:00 to 3:30. So if you have time, um, it's two to three thirty this coming Friday, back up at the St. John Episcopal. If you're able to make it, happy to give you more details. Some good information, and just, it's kicking off their, their studies. So that's that. Uh, operational audit hopefully gets underway this week with a couple, um, strategic solutions working on that. And, uh, yeah, tomorrow's election day, so if you haven't voted, vote.
Okay. Early vote often.
It's dangerous to say these days. You know, people believe in that. So, yeah, that, that's fine for now.
Do you have a number for the people who voted already?
Uh, shy of two thousand.
Did I hear that we have over four thousand registered voters in town?
Yes.
Wow. I thought we only, how many, how many residents? We had fifty-two hundred?
We're like, yeah.
Fifty-two, fifty-three hundred.
I know, they're like eight hundred Manchester kids.
How many kids?
Seven hundred.
And a very involved electorate, I guess.
Oh, that's impressive.
Yeah, that, and yeah, it's, um.
Only fifteen hundred show up to, uh, a town, any town election, if we're lucky.
We'll, we'll see more of that tomorrow, by the end of tomorrow. So, yeah, we've already passed that number. Like I say, I don't know if we hit two thousand yet.
No, I don't think she's, I think she's.
It's in the high fifteen to seventeen hundred.
So twenty-five hundred is out of the question.
Right, right.
That's an impressive turnout.
Yeah, no, you can, you can hit three thousand.
A lot of people want that from us, huh?
I would just be very excited to not see any more commercials for the New Hampshire governor's.
Uh, we were talking about that at work today.
One of the joys of living in New England, crossover from all the other states.
Well, you never hear anything about Maine. It's all New Hampshire.
Dominant.
Yeah, or close enough there.
I have seen more New Hampshire than I see anything, well, I think I've seen one. For state town, for US town, I think I've won, yeah.
Looking for a motion to adjourn, sir?
So.
Jeff?
Yes.
You have some, you have some, you have some, John?
Yeah.